Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And, we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganech Communications. Meganech offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganech.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors: Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work, for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. 508-548-0911.
Main Street Gallery and Real Estate. A family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The Attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration. 508-548-8255.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
A&amp;A Paving. We believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance. Offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeinsurance.com.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, Downtown Falmouth.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly-added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. 508-548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase. A local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry. Serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations:
Dogs &amp; Hogs, 781 Main Street. Ample parking in the back by our fence.
Lisa Peterson-Azendorf, William Ravis Real Estate Mortgage &amp; Insurance, 508-566-6259.
Grassi Septic Solutions, 508-548-7500.
Turning Point Dance Studio, 508-444-0278.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road, 508-539-3888.
The Annie Hart Cool Team, Sotheby's International Realty, 508-868-0664.
Dalpe Excavation Incorporated, 508-548-9788. Info@dalpeexcavation.com.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop, 508-274-2057.
Every lighthouse needs a keeper. FriendsOfKnopsga.org.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass. 508-540-5654. Info@peopleforcats.org.
Martha's Vineyard Bank, 84 Main Street and 397 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, 2 Water Street, Woods Hole. 508-627-4266.
The Falmouth EDIC, FalmouthEDIC.org. 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions. 781-930-5000.
Wacoit Congregational Church, 508-548-5269.
Soares Flower Garden Nursery, 508-548-5288.
M. Daphne Builders, 508-540-3625.
Danny's Barber Shop, 508-548-6013.
David Rogers Electric, 508-274-2057.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance, 1-800-800-8990.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations, 508-540-4172.
Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth, 508-548-9107.
Mahoney's Garden Center, 508-548-4842.
The Cape Cod Five, 508-457-5252.
And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More, 508-457-9454.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers, Windfall, Shaw's Supermarket, Stop &amp; Shop.
Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you for such a good evening.
Just a reminder, only town meeting members should be on the floor of the auditorium. Non-town meeting members should be in the balcony, and we do have a microphone in the balcony for non-town meeting members. So, when you want to speak on an article, stand up in the balcony and I'll put you on our speakers list. But if all non-town meeting members could please make their way to the balcony. Out here to my left, in the hallway, there is an elevator as well as the stairs that bring you up to the second floor to the balcony. Thank you.
Okay, all town meeting members, please come forward. Sit on the floor. Make sure you have your electronic voting device. The rules committee met before town meeting. And, we are...
Our electronic voting devices are in working order today, so we will be using those to establish the quorum in a moment. Want to remind all town meeting members to identify yourself by name and precinct each time you speak, for the record. Want to thank FCTV for gavel-to-gavel coverage of Town Meeting. Is there any town meeting member who does not have an electronic voting device? Okay, so at this point, I'll ask IT to queue up a quorum slide. The quorum slides are now in alphabetical order. It's not by precinct in alphabet, just in alphabetical order. And, the scrolling is a little slower. We heard that from town meeting members that it was going too fast, so we went to alphabetical order so we could slow it down a bit, so you could see your name up there.
Okay, all town meeting members present, please press 1A for the establishment of the quorum.
By a counted vote of 189, we have a quorum, and I call the annual town meeting into session. All present, please rise for the presentation of the colors by Girl Scout Junior Troop 82164.
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, please remain standing for a moment of silence for members we may have lost since our last gathering.
Colors, post?
Let's have a round of applause for Girl Scout Troop 82164.
Sorry about that. When they weren't working earlier, I was switching them on and off, and I think I shut that one off. Okay. As you know, we have a posted special town meeting. Members can sit. We have a posted special town meeting for 7:15. What we're going to do is begin with the annual. Actually, going to do the blanket vote, and then I will recess subject to the call of the chair to convene the special town meeting. So, we'll be a little late to convene, but we can't convene the special before the posted time. So, at this time, we are going to go through and do preliminary procedures and the blanket vote, and then we will convene the special town meeting. At this time, I'd like to start with the dispensing of the reading of the warrant, Madam Chair.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant except for the officer's return.
You've all heard the main motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant except for the officer's return. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, and I'll read the officer's return of the warrant. By virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and summoned the inhabitants of the town of Falmouth qualified to vote on town affairs as said warrant directs, by posting an attested copy thereof in Town Hall and in every precinct in the town, signed by Constable Thomas Zine. Mr. Clerk, I ask that the warrant become an official record for this meeting? At this time, the chair would entertain a motion for non-town meeting members to sit up front with their respective boards and committees. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion for employees who are not residents of the town the right to speak on any issue before the meeting. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. This time, I'll recognize the planning board for any notification of public hearings. There's no notification for public hearings from the planning board. And, at this time, we'll have an announcement. Ms. Lichtenstein?
Leslie Lichtenstein, Precinct 8, also coordinator for the Falmouth Annual Town Cleanup, along with our wonderful sponsor, The Chamber. This year, it's going to be appropriately
Article thirteen, to vote to increase from fourteen-thousand dollars per year to sixteen-thousand dollars per year the maximum base amount upon which the annual cost of living adjustment for a retiree is calculated. Article fourteen, vote to rescind the acceptance of Section forty-eight of Chapter thirty-one of the General Laws, the Civil Service, for fire and police forces. Article fifteen is a hold. Article sixteen, to vote to adopt the following as a general bylaw into the Chapter one-fifty of the Code of Falmouth: seasonal restrictions on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article seventeen, to vote to amend Chapter one of Article one, Section one, two C of the Code of Falmouth, regarding noncriminal disposition. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article eighteen. Hold. Article nineteen, resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. The recommendation is as printed. Hold. Article twenty, to vote to transfer three-hundred-and-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents from Article seven of the April twenty-twenty-one town meeting for the purpose of wage adjustments for union settlements and non-union employees of the town. Article twenty-one, to transfer the sum of three-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents from Certified Free Cash for the purposes of opioid mitigation, fireworks celebration, and consultant services. Article twenty-two, to vote to transfer from the following articles for the following purposes: generators, one-hundred-thousand dollars; MP towel replacement, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars; two, the Lawrence School elevator repair, one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars; and the Morse Pond School fire alarm replacement, ninety-thousand dollars. Hold. Article twenty-three, to appropriate the sum of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars from Certified Free Cash to fund the design permitting and construction for Phase One of the roof replacement projects for the East Falmouth Elementary, North Falmouth Elementary, and Morse Pond Schools. Hold. Article twenty-four, to vote to appropriate... Where are we at here? Nine-hundred and... nine-million-five-hundred-thousand dollars. Nine-hundred-thousand appropriated from unspent balances remaining in the following capital appropriations as listed in the chart. Hold. Article twenty-five, the sum of four-million-five-hundred-thousand dollars appropriated to the engineering, design, and permitting of the Collection Transmission System, Expanded Treatment Wastewater Discharge Area for Phase One of the T-Ticket Acapescot Service Area, and to authorize borrowing. Hold. Article twenty-six, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars for the purpose of financing the costs of dedicated engineering and inspection for the lead service line inventory, and to authorize borrowing. Article twenty-seven, to transfer the sum of thirty-thousand dollars from Certified Free Cash for the purpose of complying with the U.S. EPA Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rules, sampling, and reporting requirements. Article twenty-eight, to transfer the sum of three-hundred-thousand dollars from Certified Free Cash for the purpose of evaluating locations for treatment of the raw water from the Ashument Well and the Fresh Pond Well. Hold. Article twenty-nine is a hold. Article thirty, to vote to amend the Code of Falmouth for applicant submission to fingerprinting for managers of alcoholic beverage licenses. Article thirty-one, to vote to amend the Code of Falmouth vehicles for hire permits. Article thirty-two is a hold for a new main motion. Article thirty-three, to vote to delete stable regulations effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. It's a hold. Article thirty-four, to vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one-hundred-and-ten A, to authorize the Town Clerk's Office to remain closed on all Saturdays and to treat Saturdays as a legal holiday for purposes of calculating the timeframe for filing matters in the office. Article thirty-five, to authorize the Select Board to grant certain easements to N-Star Electric, doing business as EverSource Energy in connection with this proposed additional underground power supply cables to Martha's Vineyard. This is the municipal parking lot located at Depot Ave. Article thirty-six, to vote to appropriate the sum of two-hundred-thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance to restore the Upper Kunameset River. Hold. Article thirty-seven, to vote to appropriate the sum of seven-hundred-ninety-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars from fiscal twenty-four Community Preservation Estimated Revenues for public access improvements and restoration of open space at the Little Pond Conservation Area. Article thirty-eight, to vote to appropriate the sum of five-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars. Hold. Article thirty-nine, to appropriate the sum of twenty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars from the undesignated fund balance to conduct a ground-penetrating radar survey of the old burial ground. Article forty, to appropriate the sum of seventy-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-five dollars from fiscal twenty-four Community Preservation Estimated Revenues to fund work necessary for the Falmouth Historical Society to rehabilitate the historic Dr. Francis Wick's house and historical artwork. Article forty-one, to appropriate the sum of one-million-one-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars, of which one-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars is from the undesignated fund balance, and one-million is from the fiscal twenty-four Community Preservation Estimated Revenues to rehabilitate exterior features and conduct water abatement improvements at Highfield Hall. Article forty-two, to appropriate or transfer the sum of two-million-five-hundred-thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Article forty-three, to appropriate from fiscal twenty-four Community Preservation Fund Estimated Revenues, the sum of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred dollars to fund Community Preservation Administrative Expenses. Okay, I'll run through one more time by article number. Article one is a hold. Article two is a hold. Article three. Article four is a hold. Article five is a hold. Article six is a hold. Article seven. Article eight. Article nine. Article ten. Article eleven. Article twelve. Article thirteen. Article fourteen. Article fifteen is a hold. Article sixteen. Article seventeen. Article eighteen is a hold. Article nineteen is a hold. Article twenty. Article twenty-one. Article twenty-two is a hold. Article twenty-three is a hold. Twenty-four is a hold. Twenty-five is a hold. Article twenty-six. Article twenty-seven. Article twenty-eight is a hold. Article twenty-nine is a hold. Article thirty. Article thirty-one. Article thirty-two is a hold. Article thirty-three. Article thirty-four. Oh. Thirty-three, hold. Yeah, I had that. I guess I didn't say it. Article thirty-three is a hold. Article thirty-four. Article thirty-five. Hold thirty-five. Article thirty-six is a hold. Article thirty-seven. Article thirty-eight is a hold. Article thirty-nine. Article forty. Article forty-one. Article forty-two. And article forty-three. Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that all articles that have been passed not held be and hereby are adopted as recommended as the official action of this committee meeting, and that the necessary monies for the same shall be raised and appropriate or as otherwise specified.
Okay, you've all heard the main motion on the blanket. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Mr. Chairman, for notification.
Mr. Moderator, I hereby serve notice of reconsideration of all articles passed under the blanket vote.
Okay, notice of reconsideration has been served. At this time, by call of the Chair, I will recess the annual town meeting so that we can do our special town meeting, and then we will reconvene, subject to the call of the Chair, at the end of the special town meeting. So the special... the annual town meeting is in recess. If we could queue up a quorum slide to establish a quorum for the special town meeting. All town meeting members present, please press one A for the establishment of a quorum for our special town meeting. One... I had the exact opposite problem, Bob. Could be our next slide. Come on, come on, come on. Yep, there they are. Just made it in time. By a counted vote of two-hundred-and-six, we have a quorum, and the special town meeting is in session. At this time, I'll ask for dispens of the reading of the special town meeting warrant. Madam Chair.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant, except for the officer's return.
You've all heard the main motion, dispense with the reading of the special town meeting warrant. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. This time, I'll read the officer's return of the warrant. "By virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and summoned the inhabitants of the town of Falmouth qualified to vote on town affairs as said warrant directs by posting an attested copy thereof in Town Hall and in every precinct of the town, signed by Constable Thomas Zine." Mr. Clerk, I ask that the warrant become an official part of the record. Okay, Article one of the special town meeting. Madam Chair, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I recommend that the town vote Article one as printed.
Okay, Article one as printed. This is to amend the town classification plan for the three positions: deleting the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator at grade eight, and adding a Diversity Equity Inclusion Officer at grade nine, adding a Sustainability Coordinator, and adding an Assistant Superintendent of Parks, Forestry, and School Grounds. Mr. Lowell.
Nick Lowell, Precinct Five. Mr. Moderator, I move division of the question and split them up into the three logical parts of each position taken separately. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lowell is asking for a procedural vote, which is a majority, to divide the question such that when we take final action on Article one, we would vote to delete and add the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator and Officer as one vote. So you'd vote yes or no. A second vote would be to just add the Sustainability Coordinator, yes or no. And a third vote would be to add the Assistant Superintendent of Parks, Forestry, and School Grounds, a yes or no vote. So the first question is the procedural question, whether or not town meeting wishes to divide the question into those three subdivisions. All those in favor of dividing the question signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Pinned the chairs that the ayes have it by a majority, and we will divide the question when we get to the main vote. Do we have any... We'll just take a vote? Okay, any discussion, town meeting members? Yep, Ms. Lichtenstein.
I'd like to thank Mr. Lowell for saying that. It's my understanding that town meeting has asked the selectmen on numerous occasions when we are adding a number of positions that add a lot of money to our budget, that they come individually. And I wondered why we're back to lumping them up and having asked to have them separated. Because we already asked that you separate them. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Ms. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carol Murphy, Precinct Nine. The Sustainability Coordinator, I would like to know specifically what the job duties of this person are. I didn't get to read the job description, and I would like to know exactly what we're getting for a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars.
Peter Johnson, STOW, acting town manager. So the salary is, I believe, one-hundred-thousand-four-hundred-twelve dollars has been allocated in the budget, just for clarification. The... I can certainly summarize the responsibilities of the position, which are detailed in the job description posted online. The Sustainability Coordinator position is primarily, though not exclusively, focused on energy conservation and promotion of municipal renewable energy projects. So that's directly tied to both reducing the carbon footprint of the town and saving the town money through energy conservation and renewable energy projects, primarily solar. There is an allowance in the job description for the position to also work on such issues as solid waste and recycling, water conservation, and coastal resilience.
Thank you, but I'm still confused. What exactly does this person do when they check into work each day?
Mr. Moderator, so this person will be spearheading energy conservation and renewable energy projects. They are complicated. They take a lot of time. There may be grant writing involved. There's interfacing with the Cape Light Compact. There is a Green Communities Act that the town is a member of that allows... that provides for grant opportunities. And this person will not only be applying for grants, but there's also extensive grant administration work associated with the receipt and implementation of those grants. There's a project... a project management aspect of this. So if, for example, a renewable energy project is approved, there is procurement that needs to be done and a lot of work associated with that, including collaborating with other departments and other... potentially other entities such as the... it could be the Cape Light Compact. It could be SEVAC, the Cape Vineyard Electric Cooperative. So those are sort of among the core activities of the position. There's also monitoring the town's energy usage so that we can track our progress on how much energy we're consuming and how much we're conserving through energy conservation and how much energy we're generating through renewable energy. So that's the type of work the position will be doing.
Thank you, Peter. That clears that up. And again, what kind of benefits on top of that hundred-thousand dollars? What is that rate of benefits for this position?
So the... I don't have a... you know, I don't have an exact dollar amount for it, but the... you know, when you look at the cost of pension and health insurance, it gets to be close to, you know, upwards of forty percent benefit loading factor on top of that salary.
Thank you. That's why I stated the hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Thank you very much.
Mr. Netto, Ms. Carrier.
Joe Netto, Precinct Nine. Since I've already started, my question is on procedure. I'd be under the impression... I'd be under the impression, as we voted, to discuss these individually.
Not to discuss them, but to divide the questions. So the vote will be separately, but we're going to discuss all of the article.
Oh, okay, because I thought, again, that we'd discuss, vote, discuss, vote, discuss, vote. So we're going to discuss them randomly, but vote on them.
You're going to discuss Article one, and then the question has been divided, so the vote will be taken individually.
Individually, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary Carey, Precinct five. Thank you, Mr. Johnson Staub, for describing the responsibilities of the position Sustainability Coordinator. I would just remind the town meeting members that the, that a group of petitioners brought this to town meeting a year ago, and we envisioned a very high-level director position at an appropriate salary. The responsibilities that Mr. Johnson Staub described are spot-on. This is, these are, these are issues that our town, as complex as it is, needs to address immediately. We would, the petitioners would, the former petitioners would have preferred it's a Sustainability Director to assist in recruitment, to get someone super-qualified, were, and would even suggest Sustainability Manager, if that can be done on the floor here, I would make an amendment, and classified at the appropriate level as a manager.
So I'm going to say that that would be beyond the scope, because these scope of work and the job descriptions that were developed to give us the vote on these classification plans are done in the administrative branch, and so without having a new scope of work that would get it to that level in the classification plan, I would say it's beyond the scope at this town meeting. However, if a position description were created that brought it to that level, at a future town meeting, we could reclassify the position to the next, next stage, because we're not, we're not writing descriptions here, but we're looking to put in the classification plan where the current job description would fall.
Okay. Could I add one, one point that I meant to say? When the petitioners, I'll be quick. When the petitioners researched these, this petition, this position, we spoke to many sustainability managers, directors, and coordinators, and the overarching theme was that the salary was easily gained back, sometimes eight X or even twelve X the salary in, in terms of revenue or savings to the town. So if anyone's concerned that the Sustainability Coordinator position is not a good investment in the town, I would, we would say otherwise. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on Article one? Okay, hearing now the question will come on the first of three votes. The first is to delete the current Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator and add the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Pinned the chairs that the ayes have it by a majority. The second question comes on adding a Sustainability Coordinator. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Pinned the chairs that the ayes have it by a majority. And the third is to add an Assistant Superintendent of Parks, Forestry, and School Grounds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. You guys have it unanimous. Okay, we are done with the special town meeting. By call of the chair, I dissolve the special town meeting and call the annual town meeting back into session. And we are on Article one. Article one is to choose all necessary officers. This would be the appointment of our members of the Finance Committee. Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Moderator, I move Article one as recommended.
Okay, so I have a nomination slate for reappointment of five members to three-year terms. The five members are Kathleen Brou, Berio, Judy Magnani, Deb McGuire, Jason Cullenane, and Peter Hargraves, and we have one resignation from the committee for an unexpired term. And the nominee is Lee Bordick of East Falmouth. Are any further nominations for the Finance Committee? Hearing now the chair will entertain a motion to close nominations. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. You guys have it unanimous. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the nominations as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. You guys have it unanimous. Article two, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Moderator, I move Article two as recommended.
Article two as recommended. This is to hear reports from committees and town officers. First up, I have the Community Preservation Committee.
Good evening, thank you very much. I'm Maureen Thomas, Precinct two, also Community Preservation Coordinator. I'm here to present the Community Preservation Committee's update since their last update to town meeting, which was in April two thousand and nineteen. Next slide, please. So the Community Preservation Committee is a nine-member board with four at-large members appointed by the Select Board, and then five members from sending boards. Currently, Russ Robbins is the chair, Sandy Cuny is the vice chair, Michael Stone is the financial officer, Thomas Crane is the fourth at-large member, Steve Patton is the clerk and the housing authority rep, John Drooly is the planning board rep, Bob Brown is the recreation committee rep, Betsy Gladfelter is the conservation commission rep, and Tamsin George is the historical commission rep. Next slide. This is a brief history of the CPA in Falmouth, which became effective in fiscal year two thousand and six. Since that time, we have generated an incredible sixty-three million dollars for community housing, open space, recreation, and historic preservation. That's both from local revenues at the three percent property tax surcharge and state match. Next slide. This is a map showing the distribution of CPA projects throughout town and among the four categories. This map is from the CPfundfalmouth.org website, which is a great resource if you're interested in learning more about all of the one hundred and fifty-nine CPA projects in town. Next slide. This is a chart that shows the use of funds from fiscal year two thousand and six to twenty twenty-two, with the majority of the funds going toward the land bank debt at forty-seven percent, then community housing at nineteen percent. Recreation and historic preservation are both at about eleven percent, open space at six point eight percent, and the administration of the fund at three point four percent. Next slide. And this is another way of looking at that chart with the dollar amounts. It's important to note that the land bank monies have been set aside to service the debt, which will be retired in twenty thirty-five. After the fiscal year twenty-four payment, there'll be a balance of approximately one point five million. Next slide. Since two thousand and nineteen, we've spent about five million dollars on community housing with appropriations to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to support the Gifford Workforce Housing Phase Two, Lewis Neck Road, Esker Place, Main and Scranton, Emerald House, and Pheasant Lane. Next, next slide, thank you. Three point eight million since two thousand and nineteen to recreation for Nye Park, Upper Child's River, Shining Sea Bike Way Extension, Gub Fuller Field, Chiverix Pond, John L. Neal Falmouth Youth Baseball Fields, the Bell Tower Tennis Courts, and the refill reuse water station. Next slide. Two point three two million since two thousand and nineteen for open space for the Little Pond Conservation Area, Florence Sylvia Woodland Conservation Restriction, and the Land Bank Debt Service. Next slide. For historic preservation, we've spent one point two million on the Bayview Cemetery, Inventory of Historic Resources, Edward Marks Building, Falmouth Station, Woods Hole Public Library, and the Old Burying Grounds. Next slide. This is the CPA funding recommendations for this town meeting, with the project costs as follows. Upper Kunamesset River, sorry, Upper Kunamesset River Restoration, Open Space and Recreation Project requesting two hundred thousand dollars. Little Pond Conservation Area Phase Two Open Space and Recreation Project requesting seven hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. The Edward Marks Building Exterior Rehabilitation Phase Two Historic Project requesting five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars. The Old Burying Ground Ground Penetrating Radar Historic Project requesting twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. The Dr. Francis Wick's House Phase Two Historic Project requesting seventy-three thousand, five hundred and five dollars. The Highfield Hall Exterior Rehabilitation Historic Project requesting one point one zero eight million. The Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund requests two point five million. The CPC administrative budget, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, for a total ask of five million, four hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. The total cash and in-kind non-CPA match is approximately three point four million for a total cost of these projects at eight million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. If all of the above is approved by this body, the funds remaining in the CP fund will be approximately four point four million. Next slide. And the CPC's annual needs assessment public hearing is scheduled for May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at six thirty PM, in the Herman Meeting Room of the Falmouth Public Library. The CPC is undertaking some other outreach efforts as well, including a survey of the community preservation needs, possibilities, and resources of the town, as well as other efforts through the Falmouth Enterprise and FCTV. So keep your eyes peeled for those. Next slide. And with that, I'd like to thank all past and present CPC members, as well as the citizens of Falmouth for making all of the wonderful CP Fund projects possible. They really do help to improve the quality of life here in Falmouth. Thank you.
Okay, Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to be here. My name is Alan Robinson, and I'm chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We are very pleased to report that the rules and regulations for mandatory recycling were adopted by the, in December by the Board of Health, and they go into effect April fourteenth this Friday, and we thank you all for your support over the last number of years to get us to this point. We're also very pleased to inform you that beginning tomorrow, the Waste Management Facility at Thomas Laner's Road will accept recyclables from businesses, from Falmouth businesses and residents. We wish to express our appreciation to Department of Public Works for restoring this service to the community. Our primary effort, as we, as we presented to the Select Board back in December, our primary effort for this year is to work with the Department of Public Works and work really with the entire community to build the foundation to review the volume and tonnage of our trash, particularly the, the food waste, which represents about thirty percent of the mass of material that we're sending to the landfill. It's going to take a long planned-out effort, but that is our, that is our focus for this year, our primary focus for this year. On March thirtieth, the Solid Waste Advisor Committee hosted a panel discussion on Article eighteen, the petitioner's article for a bylaw to ban single-use plastic in takeout wear from food establishments. Our panel included the petitioner, Phil Guesson, who's here tonight, Chamber Executive, Michael Casperian, the owner of Seafood Sam's, Mike Lewis, and the Falmouth Health Agent, Scott McGann. It was broadcast live on FCTV. It was an excellent discussion. Based on what we, the committee learned from that discussion and our own research, we support the petitioner's goals to reduce plastics in the environment. However, we find the article to be inadequate with respect to some key elements of a good bylaw. Adequate definitions, specific requirements, and a waiver process. As a result, we voted that we cannot support the article as written. Two other items. One is, as we've talked about, I think we talked about, I know we talked about it six months ago, we are actively working to, with the Department of Public Works, to make the solid waste, the recycling and solid waste coordinator position, which is right now a nineteen-hour position, into a full-time position. We failed to do that, to get that included in the budget that you'll be, you'll be approving tonight, but we are, be working, and hopefully working together with you, such that for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget, that position becomes, goes from a part-time to a full-time position. And the last item is, we, the committee, we, the Solid Waste Advisor Committee, are working quite hard, but we're shorthanded. We're down to six, and will soon be down to five members for our seven-member committee. And so we ask members of the community, here watching FCTV, and really everybody, anybody who's interested in getting involved in the community, to actively work to really make tangible changes that can be made fairly quickly, and are interested in solid waste, will hope that you will, you will submit your application to become a member of our committee. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and have a good meeting. Thank you.
Any other committees to make reports? Hearing now the question will come on the motion to accept the reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. You guys have it unanimous. Article four. Article four is the budget. Mr. Chair, for the main motion.
Ms. Moderator, I move Article four as recommended with one change. Line one eighty-seven, page thirty-three.
This is the yellow section?
Yellow section, yes. And this is the Upper Cape Vocational School, if everybody's there. So the number will change to three million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. That's a change, a reduction of fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. When we voted that in the Finance Committee, it was an estimate, now we have the actual. Three million, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, one hundred and seventy-six.
So the main motion is as printed with that adjustment, and then the mathematical adjustments on the, the total line item and the final, final line item? Not on motion, as a main motion. So the main motion is as printed with that one change. Mr. Johnson's up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present this fiscal two thousand and twenty-four budget. Before I delve into the details, I want to acknowledge that this budget represents a collective effort that began with the Select Board's strategic planning sessions, providing policy direction for this budget. The department heads are, of course, an integral part of this process in developing the budget requests, and I want to thank the finance staff for their assistance with the analysis and production of the budget. So tonight, I want to briefly review the guiding principles that we use to develop this budget. I will review the revenue estimates, overview some highlights on the expenditures, and then offer some concluding remarks. So when I put this budget together and I look at the difficult decisions that we face in balancing any budget, I'm guided by a couple of principles. The first is to ensure long-term fiscal stability, and I'll say a bit more about what we mean by that. The second is to maintain basic services first, and then we look at addressing Select Board policy priorities to the extent that they can be funded within a structurally sound, balanced budget. And then finally, with the budget documents submitted and this presentation tonight, we seek to promote transparency by highlighting the budget changes. So what do we mean by long-term fiscal stability, or another term that we use for that is fiscal discipline? One of the first concepts is that we look to ensure that we have reliable recurring revenues to support recurring costs. So recurring costs are anything, for example, positions, wages, benefits, but also expenses that are relied upon for carrying out the town's business, such as fuel, utilities, et cetera. We want to make sure that our revenue estimates are sustainable, that they are substantially less than the prior year actual revenues. That's important for positioning the town to be able to absorb downturns in the economy or inflation that could create cost pressures. And it is also important to maintain budget flexibility so that we can continue to incrementally incorporate new priorities in future budget years. And then overall, with the budget, we want to make sure that we have some, some buffer in the budgeted expenditures, so that if there are some budgets that are, that go the budgeted expenditures, so that if there are some budgets that are, that go over for unforeseen reasons, that we have other budgets that will be under, so that in total, we're not overspending the budget. And then lastly, the town has adopted a number of fiscal policies, and we want to make sure that we abide by those fiscal policies, and specifically that we are attending to our reserves that are established in those policies. So the revenue components are familiar to most of you by this point. Fully three-quarters of the town's revenues come from property taxes. The next largest category is local receipts, and those are comprised of a number of fee-based receipts, as well as excise taxes. And then we have state revenues and available funds. So when we are putting the budget together, one of the, as we put our revenue estimates together, one of the key estimates that we look at is, within property two and a half, the new growth figure. So you're probably aware, we have a very reliable 2.5% increase on the property tax levy. And then in addition, under the Prop 2.5 law, we are allowed to raise the taxable value of new construction. And we have to estimate that, because we don't know what that actual amount is going to be for the following fiscal year. This chart shows what the actual new growth was from that new construction in prior years, and then on the far right, it shows the estimate that we are using for fiscal '24, which is $800,000. That's the same amount estimated last year, slightly more than what was estimated the prior years. And I will note that we do anticipate the new growth, based on partial data so far, will be less than it was in FY '23. Looking at the local receipts estimates, the total amount that we are relying on for this budget is $24.7 million. The graph on the slide shows how that estimated $24.7 million in the gold line, I guess it is, compares to the actual local receipts collected in prior years. You will see that it is significantly less, our revenue estimate for next year is less than what we actually collected in recent years, and that is consistent with past practice. We were fortunate that we are able to estimate an increase of $2.4 million over last year's estimated receipts. That's a 10.8% increase, and that's a big reason that we are able to accomplish some of the things that we are able to do within this budget. That estimate, the total amount of local receipts estimated, represents 80% of the most recent prior-year actual. That percentage is just a tick higher than what the percentage was used last year, 79%, and it's the highest percentage since FY '20. The final two categories of revenues are much smaller, as I indicated. We are estimating that state revenues will be level-funded. So far, the governor's proposal is pretty much in line with that. On the available funds side, we are estimating in total $80,000 less than was estimated last year, and I do want to point out that we will seek to amend some of these available fund line items listed on page 36 of your warrant book. That will be an amendment coming from the Select Board. And we'll detail those and have a slide for those later. Moving over to the expenditure side, one of the biggest categories of expenditures, of course, is wages. In the budget that appears in Article four, that budget includes the 2% cost of living for most unions. In addition to the 2% cost of living adjustment, we have been able to incorporate additional increases based on market adjustments for all of the unions. So that's an important part of, again, what is included already in this budget. Not included in the dollar amounts within Article four itself are increases for the library union, the AFSMI Unit A Union, and non-union employees. Those increases are covered by Article 20 and another article approved in 2021. So in total, what we're proposing here does include increases, including in some cases, market adjustments for those groups of employees. And then lastly, I want to note that we have increased seasonal wage rates by 15%. We've had a lot of difficulty, as most Cape employers have, with seasonal hires, and we needed to make a big move there in order to fill a larger number of our seasonal wages, our seasonal positions. This slide lists some of the larger, more difficult-to-control expenditure categories. I won't review all of them, but highlight that we were fortunate to lock in electricity and natural gas, long-term contracts, and we had some buffer in those budgets, so we did not need to increase those budgets. The health insurance budget is not increased. Again, we had a big buffer to work with there from prior years. I do want to note that there is a large increase for information technology, $325,000, which is 32%, and we feel that is absolutely necessary to protect the town for cybersecurity purposes, to maintain computer network continuity, and to pay for increased license fees for the growing number of specialized software applications that the town is increasingly dependent upon. The school department, of course, is our largest town department. The superintendent has identified increased costs due to the number, an increase in the number of high-needs students, and we were fortunate to receive this year fiscal '23 a large increase in net state aid of almost $1.5 million. The budget for next year FY '24 builds on that base, adds 2.3%, and adds an additional $500,000 allocated from short-term rental excise tax. So that total school budget is up $1,751,000, or 3.2%. This slide addresses some of the funding reserves. As I mentioned, that is an important part of maintaining fiscal stability. Our current capital stabilization fund is at about 3% of the total budget. Our policy goal there is to maintain a balance between 2% and 5% of the total budget. So we are proposing a $1 million application. Actually, you have already voted to approve that additional $1 million for the capital stabilization fund. With respect to the general stabilization fund, we have a balance of $7 million. The policy goal there is a combined balance of the general stabilization plus undesignated fund at, within a range of 5% to 15% of total budget. Our current balance is 14.8%, so we did not need to appropriate any additional funds into the general stabilization fund. With respect to other post-employment benefits or retiree health insurance, our goal is simply to approve $500,000 every year and to fund it from recurring revenues in light of the very large liability that the town has in excess of $100 million. That is our policy goal for now, until we are able to catch up with our liability on the retiree, with the pension unfunded liability. Moving now to strategic...
We're at the 10-minute. So how much, just take a vote for additional time?
Five minutes, please.
Okay. An additional five minutes for the budget presentation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Mr. Johnson's up.
Thank you. So strategic planning priorities included within this budget. The first item is affordable housing, and the town has, this is a priority identified by the Select Board, and this budget proposes $925,000 from the rooms excise tax to be appropriated to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. And I should note, that action will actually take place at the November Town Meeting appropriation, but it is part of the financing package that went into this proposal for this budget. There is an additional $50,000 within the Article four budget for the Human Services Department to address homelessness prevention. Town Meeting has voted to add these two positions to the classification plan. The Select Board will be making a motion to amend the budget, to add the salaries for the Sustainability Coordinator and the Assistant Park Superintendent back into the budget. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer position is included in the budget as a full-time salary upgraded to a higher pay grade, consistent with the pay grade that Town Meeting just approved. Another strategic planning priority identified by the Select Board was to increase the hours of the East Falmouth Library, to add Saturday hours, and to provide annual funding for a lease and a service for vehicle and body cameras for the Police Department to promote transparency and accountability. In conclusion, we are in a fortunate position to be able to maintain services and move forward with several Select Board priorities while maintaining sound fiscal discipline. And that's, that strong financial position is thanks to longstanding practices established by the Select Board, supported by the Finance Committee and Town Meeting, and we thank you for that support. And last, I just want to note that it is our belief that we do not have room within the budget to fund 14 fire department positions and still maintain strong fiscal position and future budget flexibility without a tax increase. Thank you. We welcome your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson's up. Okay, as is our practice with an omnibus budget, we allow more than two amendments because of the line item nature. What we'll do is we'll go through the budget section by section. You don't have to yell "hold" if you want to ask a question or make an amendment within a section, just stand up when we get to that section. And then, once we go through and get all of the sections done, we'll take the final vote. I know the two positions that were mentioned, the Select Board will make the appropriate amendments when we get to those sections of the budget for the positions you voted in the special town meeting. So the first section here is Town Meeting. Town Moderator? Selectman Town Manager?
Hold.
Mr. Lowell? Oh, okay. Yep. Want to do the amendment? Ms. Taylor? Madam Chair?
Mr. Moderator, I move line item number nine. I move to amend that line nine to $696,246. This brings the subtotal in line 17 to $808,676, and the explanation is, is that we seek to add the salary for the Sustainability Coordinator into the budget as originally proposed by the Town Manager.
Okay, so you'll notice that those numbers are actually what the executive recommendation was?
Mr. Moderator, we do have a slide for this. If we could have that slide pulled up, please?
Sure. So line nine and line 17, this amendment is to adjust them to the executive recommendation, which is the third column. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing another question will come on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Anything else under Selectman Town Manager? Mr. Lowell?
Nick Lowell, Precinct 5. One week ago today, the Select Board voted for a new Town Manager. The charter requires that the Town Manager have a supermajority of four out of five votes. The selected candidate was the first choice of only two out of five Select Board members. While the final vote, for four to one, technically meets the requirements of the charter, for anyone who watched the meeting, the vote was not a strong endorsement. I'm not alone in feeling like something went off the rails with the process. I have spoken with over 25 Town Meeting members in the last four days. Many are concerned and want to, quote, "do something." The reality is, for Town Meeting, there are not a lot of options. We do not have a direct role in selecting the Town Manager, and Town Meeting cannot force the Select Board to reconsider a vote. But Town Meeting does have the power of the purse, and we could, in theory, amend the Town Manager's budget. However, after much contemplation, I'm not going to request an amendment tonight. I concluded that that amendment would be too divisive. Furthermore, I want the next Town Manager to be successful, and an amendment would probably be seen as an attack on the Town Manager, when that's not my intent. Rather, I ask, I implore, the Select Board to hold off on signing the new contract until they get a chance to reconvene and revote the Town Manager position. Even if the vote remains exactly the same, I would feel better about the decision, and I'm sure many others would, too. The Town Manager is the most important unelected position in town. I urge you to take your time and ensure that the next Town Manager has the overwhelming support of at least four board members, even if it means having to start the process again. Thank you very much.
No further discussion under Selectman and Town Manager? Okay. Okay, folks? Town Meeting members, please take your seats. Any further discussion on the line items under Selectman and Town Manager? Finance Department? Mr. Netto?
Joe Netto, Precinct 9. A question to the FinCom Chairman, Mr. Schwegel. What's the purpose of the reserve fund that we have the $326,000? That seems like very little money to do anything with, with the figures that we've been talking about. Could you tell us the purpose of the reserve fund and what it's for?
Sure. So the reserve fund is actually set by the Select Board at $325,000. It's up to them how to set it and how much money is in there. It serves the purpose to be able to provide funding for anything that is unforeseen or extraordinary. So usually, we use this fund towards the end of the fiscal year, or after the end of the fiscal year, before, around, mid-July, to fund anything that, any appropriation that needs additional funding, that, something came up that was unforeseen or extraordinary.
Does this fund have a legal cap to it? Could this fund be increased? It just seems that this amount of money is very small.
It could certainly be increased if it was found to be necessary. We don't use this fund in its entirety in any one year that I'm aware of, going back and looking at least five years. I wouldn't, I don't have at my fingertips how much we use, but there's always money left over. What happens with the money that's left over is considered a turnback, and it goes back to free cash.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else under Finance Committee or Finance Department? Town Accountant? Assessing? Town Treasurer Collector? Town Council? Personnel Department? Commission on Disabilities? Information Technology? Mr. Rafferty?
Steve Rafferty, Precinct 2. I appreciate that the IT Department needs some money to catch up with things, the way it was written up. My only question is, do we expect this level of funding going forward? Or is this a one-time catch-up level of funding?
Mr. Moderator?
Yep, Mr. Johnson's up.
We anticipate that this is a level that the department is going to need to remain at. at. This is not a one-time catch-up.
Town Clerk? Under Community Development, the Conservation Department? Planning Department? Zoning Appeals? Building Department? Health Department? Under Public Safety, Police Department? Fire Department? Consol- oh.
Mark Mancini, Precinct 8. Going back to the Police Department. I was wondering what cruisers we're intending on purchasing, if we're sticking with the hybrid Ford Explorers.
Mr. Johnson Staub.
So, we have had some difficulty with the hybrids in terms of reliability. That is an issue that is, and there are also delays in terms of being able to receive delivery of the hybrid vehicles. So that is an issue that is under investigation. We are reviewing it. It is likely something that I will be bringing, or my, or the incoming Town Manager will be bringing back to the Select Board, as there is currently a policy that requires that we be purchasing hybrid vehicles wherever possible.
Okay. I just want to say, the Massachusetts State Police and almost every department is abandoning them because of their reliability issues. It would be nice to have more fuel-efficient vehicles, but rather, vehicles that could actually show up to calls.
Consolidated Communications Department? Marine and Environmental Services? Under the Department of Public Works, Facilities Maintenance? Administration and Engineering? Highway Division? Snow and Ice Control? Street Lighting? Vehicle Fuel? Bikeways Committee? Fleet Services? Waste Management Facility? Solid Waste Collection? DPW Wastewater? DPW Water? Renewable Energy? DPW Parks? Madam Chair.
I move to amend line 175 to $1,118,027, in line with the executive recommendation. The Select Board seeks to add the salary of the Assistant Superintendent of Parks, Forestry, and School Grounds into the budget as originally proposed by the Town Manager.
Okay. You've all heard the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Any further discussion on DPW Parks? Education, School Department? See a hand in the back left there? Can't tell who it is, a shadow there. To my, to my left in the back? You could stand so the microphone carrier can see.
Hi, Wendy Vogel, Precinct 4. School Department was one of the bigger increases, at 3.2 million, 6% increase. Is there, are there new programs, more students, more computers? What accounts for such an increase?
We have our superintendent. Doerr up in the balcony there? You just need to, on that one, you would just need to turn the, the mic switch on.
Yes. So, the, oh, sorry. The increase was a 3.2% increase, as presented with Peter Johnson Staub during his budget.
Ms. Vogel, did you have another question? I, I'm going to need, need you to have a mic, because I can't hear that far. I can just barely see that far.
It looks like $3.2 million increase is, comes out, I think, to around 6%. But at any rate, what is the increase going towards? So, the increase first was in the November, the additional state funding came out to nearly $1.5 million. So that was within the budget. So for the budget next year, that's already included. So then, there was a 2.3% on top of this year's budget, and then, an additional $500,000 that came to the 3.2. So I'm, those are the numbers that we're working off of. I just want to know what it was being used for. Is it new programs, more students, more computers? So, we, so the, the additional funds that we received from the state, we increased our counselors, our ELD teachers, our English Language Development teachers, our reading teachers, Special Education teachers, and teaching assistants. And this is all based on our student needs. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on the School Department? Upper Cape Vocational School? Under Community, oh. Yep, Mr. Forsett. And now, it's on. Mr. Moderator and members of the Town of Falmouth, the gentleman previous made mention to reducing that line item. That is correct. When the articles were printed, the School Committee had not voted the budget yet or the assessment, so the number that he voted is accurate. It is $50,124 less than what is listed in the articles. And Upper Cape Tech, thanks you. Any further discussion on Upper Cape Tech? Okay. We'll go on to Community Services, Senior Services. Veteran Services. Human Services. Falmouth Public Library. Recreation Department. Beach Department. Townwide Expenses, Retirement. Health Insurance. Life Insurance. Medicare Tax. Other Employee Benefits. Court Judgments. Town Insurance. Debt Service, Long-Term Excluded Debt. Long-Term Unexcluded Debt. And then, on page 36, we have our Revenue Sources. Madam Chair.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the following budget transfer lines found on page 36. Line D, Transfer from Title V Program for Debt Service, $15,000. Line E, Transfer from Energy Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Account for Debt Service, Line F, Transfer from Road Betterment Account for Debt Services, $109,456. Line G, Transfer from Golf Special Revenue Fund for Debt Service, $613,682. Line J, Transfer from the Waterways Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Fund for Debt Service, Line K, Transfer from Receipts Reserved Sewer, $139,191.
Okay. Could we go back one slide for a moment? I didn't get the number on F. So the, the changes there are the ones that are in bold for lines D, E, F, G, J, and Mr. Chairman.
I want to point out with all those changes, the dollar amount does not change from what's in your book. So, it was a reshuffling to make it more accurate, that that is the actual debt service that is owed. So, the total of that entire page of all those changes is $2,284,594. So, that means that your budget is still in balance.
Question will come on the motion to amend the Revenue Sources. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Any further discussion on the budget? Yep.
Deborah Aguirre, Precinct 9. I apologize for not asking this earlier, but under a Police Department salary and wages, it went down. Can someone tell me, is it because we have less policemen, or we lost them, retired, whatever? Could someone explain it? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I'd be happy to respond to that question. So, the Police Department budget is going up, almost $600,000 from FY '23 to FY '24. There was a reduction. I believe the Speaker is referring to the difference between the original request and the recommendation, and that reflects a reduction in the requested overtime. It is our anticipation that with the, between the budget and the overtime, we have sufficient funds to meet all of our needs. The way that has been playing out recently is that some of the full-time positions have been vacant, so that, the, the regular wages portion has been underspent, and the overtime has been overspent.
Okay.
I need some clarification on the numbers. The total operating budget on page 36 is the recommended by FinCom, and we have added in things to recommend it by the executive to, because we put those, so, so what number are we looking at, and which one do we vote on? Or did we vote on?
So, it's going to be the raisin appropriate. Go ahead.
Hello, Ed Santio, Finance Director. How are you all doing? With the three changes, which include the Sustainability Coordinator, Park Supervisor, and the decrease in Upper Cape, the total amount would be $153,765,348.
Thank you.
Yeah, so for the non-transfers, that, the other revenue comes from raisin appropriate. Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gotcha. Yep.
Hello, my name's Lynn Shad, Precinct 3. Just a question about the amount that is, that funds that are given for beach nourishment. Our beaches are in really bad condition, and $25,000 doesn't seem like it's very much. So I was wondering how that was arrived at, and whether there's any plans for potentially
So, the, the beach nourishment number has been level funded at $25,000. That's the amount that we have been spending recently. The Speaker's point is well-taken. There certainly is a need for more beach nourishment at this point. Staff capacity is a limitation in terms of the permitting that needs to be done, and the, and the design studies that need to be done in order to expand at a higher level.
Question will come on the main motion. Oh, Ms. Fenway?
I'm not sure where, where to put this question, except to state that I would like some sense of the costs that were saved in this fiscal year for the Town Manager's position that were covered by the Assistant Town Manager, the HR Director, whose position was also covered by the Assistant Town Manager, and the Finance Director's position, which was also covered by the Assistant Town Manager.
I'd have to look that up.
The question will come on the main motion as recommended, uh, excuse me, as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Mr. Chairman, for notice of reconsideration. I guess we don't have to.
Mr. Moderator, I hereby serve notice of reconsideration of Article 4 as passed.
Okay, notice has been served. Article 5. Article 5 is stabilization fund. Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 5 as recommended to create a stabilization fund to pay the Fire Department wages and expenses.
Okay, you've all heard the main motion. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This presentation is going to address Articles 5 and 6. Can you? Thank you. Article 5 is to create the Fire Department Stabilization Fund, and Article 6 is to appropriate $950,000 for 14 new fire department positions, subject to that 2.5% operating override. $600,000 of that money would go directly to the Fire Department budget, and $350,000 would go to the Fire Department Stabilization Fund. And I just want to go backwards just a little bit to say that in March of 2022, the Select Board adopted a policy, and that policy was to, for a six-station model, once the Hatchville Station was operational, and this was unless or until a Northwest Combined Station was operational. So, the Select Board, that's what they do, they do policy, and they want a six-station model. Currently, we have learned in the past two years that we have not been able to staff five stations. We have not had enough firefighters to cover all stations. So, the Select Board requested and received from the Town Manager and the Fire Chief a detailed analysis on the need for the additional fire department staff, and this happened during our strategic planning workshops. Presentations were made to us, the Select Board, on July 25th in 2022, on August 22nd, 2022, and January 23rd, 2023. So we have been talking about this for quite a while. This is an operating override, which means it will increase your taxes if it is approved. Secondly, the staff have made the case, Mr. Johnson Staub and our Fire Chief, they've made the case to the Select Board that we need 14 additional positions, and they are needed to provide robust fire and emergency medical responses to our entire town. So again, the Select Board requested and received from Mr. Johnson Staub and Fire Chief Smith, the evaluation of our funding options. And the funding options were, fund the entire cost of the 14 positions with a $1.5 million override, or fund a portion of the cost with 950, and make room for the additional $500,000, $550,000 cost in future budget years. And the Select Board recommended the smaller... And the Select Board recommended the smaller override of $950,000. We recognize that there are advantages to the larger override, for sure. There's more room to address many pressing budget priorities in future years. We opted for that smaller override because we know the cost of living in Falmouth is already challenging for many of our residents. And again, we don't take that tax increase lightly. So the proposed plan includes the mechanism, which is that stabilization fund, to ensure that the money raised by the override will be spent only on firefighter wages and expenses. The town has applied for the SAFER grant, which is the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, and it is a federal grant. And we applied for that because we're hoping to save taxpayer money and mitigate budget impacts of the 14 additional firefighters for the first three years. So Chief Smith will now provide a more detailed explanation of why these positions are needed, and Mr. Johnson Staub will help us all understand the funding plan moving forward.
Thank you. Good evening all. Timothy Smith, Fire Chief. I wish to now provide an overview of the next several slides for a more detailed explanation of why these 14 new positions are needed. Following this, interim town manager Peter Johnson Staub will explain the funding plan. In this slide, it represents the number of incidents in the last 20 years. As you can see, our call volume continues to rise, and this creates more demand for our services in the community by our department, and it requires personnel to meet these demands. Next slide. As of December 1st, 2022, we now require 16 personnel at the start of the shift to staff all of our five stations. Next slide. This map shows the locations of our five current stations and the minimum staffing in each of these locations. And this is as of December 1st, 2022. Next slide. Suffice to say, with the additional station, we require at a minimum two additional at the start of the shift. The current and future minimums reflect safe staffing practices for our personnel in the community. Next slide. And this slide shows the location of the six stations, which includes the new Hatchville Station and the minimum staffing at each of these locations. We need 72 personnel to staff four shifts to a start of, to a start of shift minimum at 18 personnel. As you can see, as we have provided throughout the year, 365 days a year, it's covered by four groups, and each group works a 24-hour shift. 18 personnel, four groups, equates to 72 personnel. And the 72 personnel are needed if there are no vacancies, no long-term leaves, no vacation, sick leave, et cetera. And again, with this override, we seek to now reach 92 budgeted positions to meet the daily minimum staffing of 18. Next slide. As you can see, the 92 personnel depicted here, and that requires 23 personnel or will provide 23 personnel per day. Typically, we have vacancies due to retirements and resignations. We typically see medical leave or injury leave with our personnel, and we also see military leave, since we have more personnel that are engaged in military service. And that number varies, however, we have found that by, by experience, that would put us at 86 personnel being available. Our per-shift average before vacation and personal time or sick leave then puts us at 21.5 per shift. The number of vacation, personal, and sick leave per day, through, again, through our experience, we know that we can vary from zero to six people being, or personnel being off. And so, the start of the shift, our complement may be reduced, and it may be either 15 personnel or it could be 21 personnel. Regardless, we need to have 18 at the start of the shift, 365 days a year. Again, with, with our personnel and with what we're trying to achieve, we see that to staff these six stations on a daily basis, we require a minimum of 18 personnel at the start of the shift, as has been stated. We are budgeted for 78, and we will require 92 personnel to meet our daily minimum of 18 personnel. Additional personnel will help assure a buffer to meeting the daily minimum, and the new Hatchville Station, once completed and operational, will require two personnel at a minimum, and that will require eight personnel for four shifts at this location. This personnel planning is needed to staff our six stations. So, on behalf of my department and our personnel and as a taxpayer, I ask for your support, and I now wish to turn this over to Peter Johnson Staub for his explanation of the financial elements of this override. Thank you.
Thank you. So, what's it going to cost us? This slide shows our calculation of the per firefighter cost. I won't run through each line item, but I do want to highlight a couple of points. One is that we are basing our estimates on a Step 1 firefighter EMT, and that we are not including in this estimate the one-time costs for training and equipment. And as a result of those two factors, the per firefighter cost for this override is actually less than the prior-year override, which used more conservative estimates in terms of budgeting for a paramedic position, which is certainly what the town would prefer. However, recent experience is that they're simply not available. We are hiring, in the vast majority of cases, we're hiring EMT-level certification as opposed to paramedic. So that, that's just an updated, more accurate assessment. And certainly, if we're going for an override for recurring funds, we don't want to include one-time costs in that override calculation. So the total per firefighter that we are estimating is 106,000, multiplying that by 14 firefighters, comes out with nearly $1,500,000. Before I leave this slide, I do want to make mention that in this funding plan, among the 14 that we hire, we will be promoting four additional lieutenants. So that's not an added cost above the override amounts that are estimated, but just wanted to be clear that there are additional promotions that go along with the additional staff. So why do we need an override? Well, we need to assure that funds are available to pay the cost of new positions every year once the positions are filled. We cannot rely on one-time funding sources, as we've talked about many times. You may hear from some other speakers tonight that the town generates a lot of free cash, and why can't we use free cash to fund these positions? It's certainly true that we have consistently generated over $8, $10 million a year in free cash. However, we rely on a large portion of that free cash to fund our annual capital needs. So we really don't want to impinge on that capital funding stream, and truly, the free cash is unstable. It relies on revenue estimates and turnbacks, so we don't want to have to rely on that to fund what we know is going to be a recurring cost. And lastly, we are recommending an override because we want to maintain conservative budget estimates so that we can avoid layoffs and service disruptions when, not if, but when a recession hits or inflation hits. So when we were deliberating on this override, we were faced with competing priority goals. Tax impact is always forefront of our minds when we put a budget together. The last thing that we want to do is come to town meeting and the voters and ask for a tax increase. It's not something that we take lightly. On the, on the other opposing end of that competing priority is fiscal stability and budget flexibility. So we arrived at, the Select Board ultimately endorsed this override of $950,000, which funds a portion of the cost of the 14 positions, but not the entire cost. We believe that this override is sufficient to minimize the risk of future budget cuts to other departments, and will leave room for potential to address other strategic planning priorities in future years. And this override does mitigate the tax increase by absorbing roughly 1/3 of the cost within the tax levy limit. So we have some timing issues that are challenging for this, this need, because it's going to take us well over a year to hire all of these 14 firefighters. So the dilemma it raises is, we don't want to recruit and fill these 14 positions unless we are assured we have a sustainable funding source for all of those 14 positions. And so we're seeking an override, and we want to make sure that all of the funds raised by that override go for the intended purpose of that override. So what we've come up with, and this came about through a dialogue with the Finance Committee, is this proposal that relies on a stabilization fund, so that we have a place to put the additional funds that are not needed right away. Over in that first year of the override, we expect to be raising funds that we don't need in the first year. Those funds will be placed in a stabilization fund for the fire department. That's what Article 5 does, is it creates that new stabilization fund, so that in future years, we can draw from those funds when the full cost of those 14 firefighters hits. I want to go back to that prior slide and just talk more about the timing issues. So the Hatchville Fire Station is going to, the construction is underway, and if anyone's driven down Sandwich Road, you've seen that. The earliest that might be completed is the spring of 2024. But our hiring timeline, optimistically, we're looking at hiring seven firefighters by this November, and the balance of the additional seven firefighters by next November. It takes a full year between the date of hire to the date that those firefighters are fully trained and available for shift strength. So it's not until November of 2025 that we would have all 14 of these firefighters hired and available for shift strength. And that's not a guarantee, that's our optimistic estimate. So it's imperative that we start recruiting right away, because it's such a long timeline to get these firefighters trained and staffed, and as it is, we're going to be filling these positions and having them available after the station is expected to be completed and available for use. So in addition to the proposed override, the fire department has prepared, and we have submitted an application for a SAFER grant. That is a grant to the federal government, to FEMA. We are seeking to fund six positions within that grant. That amounts to $746,000 per year, and that figure does include the one-time costs associated with those new hires, which are an allowed expenditure under the SAFER grant. So that SAFER grant works really nicely with the stabilization fund. We won't know whether or not we're going to get it until after the May election, but if we do, it will enable us to put more money into the stabilization fund to give us more time to build that full cost of the 14 firefighters into the budget. And again, that stabilization fund provides a mechanism to assure that all the funds raised by the override will go toward fire department wages and expenses, including benefits. So the tax impact of this $950,000 override is estimated to be six cents on the tax rate, and our average single-family assessed value, believe it or not, is $762,000. So applying that tax rate to the average single-family assessed value comes out to an annual average tax impact of $45.71, and that, of course, is in addition to the 2.5% increase that we would normally see on the tax rate. That concludes our presentation, and we welcome your questions.
Okay, so we did a joint presentation on the establishment of the stabilization fund, which is Article 5 that we're on, and then Article 6, when we'll discuss the amount and the override itself. But any questions on the stabilization fund? Yep, in the balcony?
Hi, Donna Hammers, Precinct 1. I'm just wondering if the Fire Commissioner can address how much money is being allocated to prevention, because unfortunately, we have a growing elderly population, and unfortunately, a lot of elders are having dementia and Alzheimer's issues and having fires in their homes. And I'm wondering if any money is going to prevent that and help it, help them. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's really an omnibus budget question. We're talking about capital stabilization funds. Do you want to make a brief comment, Chief?
Sure. So we have a fire prevention officer and two fire inspectors who work on a daily basis and provide assistance to the community. They work through other grant sources, grants that allow us to do some education in the schools, and also for senior, the seniors out there. We also have a grant to help with fire prevention education, and they're very busy, and we work along with building services to address any issues that we come about in any occupancy. So our fire prevention personnel are very active and do a great job for this community, and, you know, I think we're very fortunate. And thanks for raising my position to Commissioner.
Mr. Mancini.
Question, just, will the stabilization fund eventually go away, or is it going to exist in perpetuity?
Mr. Johnson Staub.
The stabilization fund is intended to be temporary. I can't give you a precise number of years, but it would certainly be our recommendation that we would be bringing it back to town meeting. To close, the fund would require a town meeting action, but we don't want to see a proliferation of stabilization funds for every department.
Thank you, that's what I was concerned about.
Mr. Chairman.
Just to add something that Mr. Staub said. The state law requires when you create a stabilization fund, it has to stay in place for at least three years, and then you have to vote to eliminate it.
Further discussion?
Steve Rafferty, Precinct 2. I'm speaking in favor of this. One aspect that, a great presentation that wasn't touched upon, is there's something called the insurance service organization that rates communities on their ability to fight fires and other things, and that sets your insurance rates for what you pay for your home insurance. I don't know that anybody's done the analysis, but I have a strong feeling that without getting these additional firefighters, we'd all be paying more than $45 a year for our insurance.
Mr. Potamus, you're just letting him go through? Okay, yep.
I was wondering if Chief Smith, the plan that you guys have put together is certainly ambitious to get these new hires in. Could you just speak for a moment as to how you plan to recruit those firefighters in that timeline, and what you'll do to meet those goals, please?
Chief.
We've been anticipating the revocation of civil service, so we're working on a plan to work towards recruitment, finding qualified applicants. Under civil service, when we were looking for qualified applicants, we normally would look for firefighter EMTs or firefighter paramedics, since we operate dual service, where we're providing fire protection and we're also responding to medical calls. So we'll find that, that similar scenario as we look towards recruiting new, new qualified applicants. We'll also take into consideration other factors, such as residents, veterans' status, and obviously qualifications with some fire training. So we've been working on this. We were waiting for the vote this evening, and then, once... We were waiting for the vote this evening and then, once, you know, you support this, we'll work towards getting this program going and see if we can start to get the wheels spinning to get personnel to work in our department. Thank you.
Ms. Fenwick?
Judy Fenwick, Precinct One. Could I ask that you go back to the slide that showed each of the stations and the staffing number?
Would you like 18 or 16?
18, I think. No, I want to see the staffing slide, the one with the numbers on it. That one. So I noticed that the new Hatchville Station has two, along with Woods Hole, North Falmouth, and West Falmouth. I'm just curious on a profile for each of those stations. Square footage kind of comes to mind, but the number of vehicles that each of those has, because it seems to me the new Hatchville Fire Station's going to be bigger in square footage, and I don't know about the number of vehicles versus the other smaller stations.
So yes, so you can imagine our headquarters station has the largest cache of equipment and personnel. Our other outlined stations, with the exception of West Falmouth, each has an engine for fire response and an ambulance. The Hatchville Station will have the same, it'll have an engine and an ambulance. However, it'll have room for growth to put other equipment in that station since we're running out of room in some of our other stations right now. So our plan is to put equipment there and we have room for future growth for additional personnel. The West Falmouth Station has an engine only because of the size and, you know, and we require a minimum of two personnel to staff our equipment. And that's how we're looking at this right now as our minimums go.
Okay, another question here?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Cap, Precinct Three. Can I ask the Chief to get up again? On your first slide, you showed the increase in calls from 5,600 to 8,900. Do you have a breakdown of which, what those calls are? Did we have 8,900 fires or was it all ambulance?
Oh, no. No, God, no. So the last year, we logged 8,920 calls. And within that range, we have several different categories of responses that we look at, we obtain data, and we have to report that to the state and also, you know, for our own statistics to pass along when we're trying to, you know, look for additional funding. And in this instance, we do see that the 8,900 calls are mainly medical. Most departments in the Commonwealth, it's about a 75% average of medical responses, and the remainder are additional calls that what we deem all hazards call. They could be fire alarms, they could be structure fires, they could be brush fires, dumpster fires, car fires, et cetera. But we see, we run the gamut on a daily basis.
Thank you. Would it behoove us to bring an outside ambulance company into town?
That would be for, you know, for discussion another day, but I think the services that you get from our department are superior. And I don't think that a private ambulance would serve this community well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah, down here in the aisle?
Lynshad, Precinct Three. The salaries for the firefighters, I guess this is a question for the Chief, are they going to be competitive enough to attract qualified applicants here, given the cost of living here in Falmouth?
It's a good question. Most of the departments on the Cape, since I do speak to the other Fire Chiefs and we meet on a monthly basis, are all seeing the same issue. And one of the things that we've had to do is to increase our residential, our residency requirement. And right now, our residency requirement is 30 miles. So we've had to think outside the box to try and increase that mileage so that we could get more qualified applicants because of the cost of living issues, as was stated in the tax slide that the Town Manager provided. It's very costly, as we know. And as far as competitive salaries, currently working within a current contract, and it is in line with other departments on the Cape. However, they change every three years as well. So it's, you know, it's something that everybody's trying to chase once in a while. But right now, our personnel, you know, are making wages that are equal to or, you know, or about, you know, the remainder of the Cape departments.
Okay, the question will come on the establishment of this, okay. Okay, okay, go ahead. We're going to just talk about the stabilization fund because we cannot take a break until we finish the next article because the selectmen will have to choose what to put on the ballot tonight. Tonight is the legal deadline for the Select Board to set the ballot, and they have a posted meeting at nine o'clock. So let's do stabilization because we're going to have a whole debate on Article Six.
Okay, for your information, I've had my hat up for five minutes. Folks, anytime we have a prop override, fund something, you're all concerned about your tax rate. And I did a brief study by talking to the Assessors' Office. We have 15 towns on the Cape. We have six towns that have a higher tax rate than we do and eight that are lower than we do. Our tax rate is right about in the middle. The highest tax rate is Sandwich, $11.50 per thousand. We are currently $6.92 per thousand. And the cheapest is Chatham, $3.88 per thousand. I think after tonight's discussion, we're definitely getting a lot of bank for our buck. I thank the police and the Fire Department for what they're doing and for the people that have put this forward. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take the vote just on the establishment of the fund because we will have a full debate on the next article. All those in favor of the establishment of the stabilization fund signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. As per the Chair's at the ice, have it by a two-thirds majority, and I so declare. Article Six, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Six as recommended for an override of $950,000.
Okay, Article Six. This is to raise and appropriate $950,000 to pay for the wages, benefits, and expenses associated with hiring up to 14 additional firefighters contingent upon voter approval of a Proposition Two-and-a-half override ballot question. Discussion on Article Six. Mr. Clark?
Peter Clark, Precinct One. I was an advocate for the larger override because I just hate to see us pinch back, hold back other important positions to make sure that our public safety is in good shape. So I wish we had moved the larger override. I wish also that we could somehow get a better handle on those people in town who would be stressed by a $65 increase rather than a $45 increase. I praise the Select Board for beginning to look at a split tax rate, ways to help people who need that help. But I know that the vast majority of people in this town really could probably manage that higher tax rate. And I'm sorry we didn't go in that direction. I hope we will continue to look for ways to help those who need that help in the face of cost of living. I do support this. I think that we're going to have to find four or five firefighters who want to go in the same mortgage to buy one of those $750,000 homes.
Okay, Mr. Netto?
Phil Netto, Precinct Nine. Segueing off the previous speaker, I have a different attitude towards the override. I wholeheartedly supported the passed article to create the stabilization fund because of the technicality of once an override is passed, the monies for the override can only be used for one year. After that, the monies go into the general fund. I don't want anyone to misconstrue what I'm going to say because I'm going to give you an amendment to lower the override figure. And I'll explain that shortly, and I'd like the time as an opponent, as an unpresentation, instead of just the four minutes. It was just my motion to get that on the record. The amendment would be to reduce the override to $500,000 and not 950.
So we have an amendment for $500,000?
Yes. It's kind of hard to get you to understand all these figures. I've been at this a long time. I've been in this room for 40 years. I was a watchman of the warrant under moderators Bob Marshall and the current moderator, Mr. Viera, in the 80s and 90s, and reported to you on every article that was passed by this group. Our role as town meeting members is to make bylaws, make zoning changes, and to approve every penny that is spent in the town of Falmouth. The selectmen do not raise taxes. I said this before and I repeat myself again. We do. We raise taxes when we vote yes on fiscal articles, just like we did on Article Four. Why do I want to reduce the override figure? Not to be construed with not wanting to hire more firemen. I support that. I also think we have time. There are a couple of things that are happening, and then I'm going to give you some facts. It is mentioned, Mr. Staub mentioned it, when he gave, and he talked about a recession. We could be looking at one. We could be looking at economic chaos if our elected representatives in Washington, D.C. do not lift the debt ceiling. Well, how does that affect us tonight? I think we have to take a very, very careful look when we raise and appropriate. The six cents on these Proposition Two-and-a-half overrides, I'd like to give you some figures first. First of all, we have had three overrides brought before us in this town. 1990, 1997, and 2020. In 1990, the first override, it was defeated. The second override in 97, for 980,000 passed. And in 2020, for the firefighters, 971,000. That obviously passed, you know that, you were here, most of you voted for it. Let me show you how the six cents changes. When you vote an override, every year, that figure, that base figure, gets multiplied by two-and-a-half percent. I'm only going to give you the figures for the 2020 override because I know most of you were here for that. That was for $971,570. The next year, the tax increase was $24,287. That's added to the principal. The next year was $24,894 for the next four years. To cut to the chase, that $971,507 override for the last fiscal year was $1,072,360. That figure does not go away. The more alarming figure, and all these documents that I have are published on the website, they're all made available. I'm not making up any figures, everything I'm going to give you comes off the town's website. And this is really disturbing because we just talked about this. Up until fiscal 2017, 100% of the property taxes in this town were paid for by the people who owned property. In 2018, we didn't reach 100%. It just dropped slightly to 99.79%. You see, what's, that's no big deal. Well, that was worth, hold on, that was worth $778,000 in tax revenue. But the more alarming figure is once we reach 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, and fiscal 2022, less and less people have paid their real estate tax. Why? Because they can't afford it, we would assume. What was last year's figure? It's fallen to 98.3%. Jesus, Joe, what are you getting excited about, 1.7? Because that represents $2.3 million of tax revenue that would pay for the override. People are not, your fellow neighbors are not paying their taxes. It's not because they don't want to, because they can't afford it, obviously. These are the facts and figures that I'm going to vote on. I'm going to ask you to reduce the override. And I know it's a hard sell. I can't beat PowerPoint presentations, Fire Chiefs, Town Managers. Peter, you must be the most popular person in town right now. Congratulations. I make my decisions based on facts. I was very upset on comments that were made about the people of Falmouth don't pay enough taxes, we have plenty of money. As a past watchman of the warrant, I started looking at past articles. And in December of this year, I handed two of the selectmen that are on the stage, Chairman Taylor and Mrs. Price, a list of articles that went back to 2015 where zero money was spent, zero. And what's more alarming, if you look at, and we're still on the books, and I'm not going to get into the articles and the hearing of why and listen to the excuses, not the reasons, but the excuses. But what really bothers me is this is your town charter. Chapter C, eight-nine, lapse, lapse of appropriations. In the charter, and I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, it basically says, "Any funds not encumbered after three years must be returned," shall, excuse me, "shall be returned to the general fund. The purpose of any such appropriation shall be deemed abandoned if three years pass with any disbursement from the encumbrance of the appropriation." Chairman Taylor, were you aware of that, if I may ask? Chairman, were you aware of that information before I gave it to you in December? Those funds that hadn't been spent?
Okay, yeah. Go ahead, you want to?
Can I answer the question?
Yeah, answer the question.
Are you asking me if I was aware of the articles that had not been closed out?
Right. Has anybody ever approached you with that information of funds before I gave it to you?
I did not have that. What I will tell you is that the Select Board creates policy, and we use our policy to meet, to work with our strategic plan and what our strategic priorities are. And then we try to work with the Town Manager to And then we try to work with the town manager to make the strategic priorities happen.
And I have to say, those funds have been looked at. We have a new finance director. I've met with Mr. Centel a couple of times. I think he's got a very good attitude. He and I are both agreement, I think, in a lot of things, and he has actively been looking at that. And if you looked at one of the articles that we're going to be voting on tonight, he's found $900,000 that we're going to repurpose.
Let me just step back. When you did meet with me in December and you did give me what you had found by going through the articles, I did go and I met with Peter Johnson Staub, and he did start looking right away.
Okay, Joe, Joe, you're at the 10 now.
Okay.
So we've got a motion as an amendment to reduce the line item to 500,000.
Two more minutes.
No, you had 10 minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment to reduce the number to 500,000. Mr. Latimer? Oh, we got—the mic coming down.
Richard Latimer, Precinct One. I want to speak against this amendment. My family moved here in 1958. I was going into high school, this school. My parents bought their house, nice house, four bedrooms, Dutch Colonial, downtown, $7,500. That house today, I'm going to say, is probably assessed at $750,000 or close to that. The fact is, costs have been going up. The need for services have been going up, as we've seen by the fire department's upscale on number of calls. That's because this town has been developing and developing and developing new houses, new subdivisions. It's still going on. These people who are being—will be asked to pay another $45 on their several thousand dollars of tax bills are not going to be hurt by this override. The selectmen have done their due diligence. They have said, okay, we're not going to override as much as we could. We're going to keep it at a minimum. But they are meeting a need, a very important need, to make sure that the people who are paying those property taxes are protected in their homes against fire, against emergency medical needs. As Mr. Herbst has pointed out, our taxes aren't that high compared to towns like Sandwich. They're about in the middle, and this override isn't going to do anything significant to change that. I'd vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Ms. Neto?
I'm in Peter Clark's corner. I would have liked to have seen the larger one because I know what's coming when we come to you and tell you that our first line of defense, which is our beaches are in dire straits, and we are going to need to do something or we're going to flood all over this town. So I'm worried about pinching pennies, but I know we need these firefighters. I also know from doing the affordable housing talks all around town with the Chamber of Commerce that $61,000 salary is exactly $100 higher than being able to be put in an affordable house. So I want you to think about that, and I want you to think about—we're talking about $25 here. He's asking you to save 25. I'm telling you that $25 is what a family of four spends to go for an ice cream. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment. Ms. Neto?
If I—we just give you one more figure, and this is the reason that I didn't get to, I'm sorry. We have seven, and we just created number eight, stabilization fund, so—which I voted for. We have $17.2—$17.2 million, and this is where I would like to take the money from to put into the stabilization fund to hire firefighters. I'm not against hiring firefighters. Please, listen to me. $17.2 million in stabilization funds, and we're going to ask the citizens to pay more taxes. Of those two funds, we have—two of them—we have spent zero since they've been created. We haven't—
Mr. Petemis?
I'm telling you a funding source to make up for the $500—
He's using his right to speak after—so you have a presentation and then you can speak.
I don't want you to think that I'm asking you to cut this—
What are you shaking your head for? That's after you have used your ability to speak. We've always done that. I've always allowed the speakers to come back, and then after they hit the second time, you can only answer fact-based questions.
Okay, I'll end very quickly. With a new town administrator coming in, with a new finance director that we have, Mr. Centel's sitting on up there, we could review this, go back to it. That's why I'm reducing the figure to $500,000. I know it's skeptical. I take a risk coming up here and saying that, but I'm here to vote and to represent all the people in town of Falmouth, not just the ones that can afford a tax increase. Because we got some big, big bills coming up, and I'm not going to waste my four minutes on those with the sewer and the outfall. So other—there were funding—we could—only we can move money from the stabilization fund by a two-thirds vote. That's your town meeting responsibility. Let this current board of selectmen, a new town manager, a new finance director, come back to us in November. If you're worried about, oh, Joe, we're not going to have any money, we're not going to be able to get these guys. We do have some time on our side, and if I can find these funds, I'm sure somebody who's more intelligent and trained than I am can. So I'll give up my four minutes. That's it. Thank you very much.
Question will come on the amendment to reduce the amount to 500,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. It's a pin of the chair that the noes have it by a majority, and the question is back on the main motion. Dr. Schneider, you were on my list for the main motion. Are you—you're all set after that? Okay. Further discussion on the main motion. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carol Murphy, Precinct Nine. I just want to make a comment that all of us have had our properties reassessed, and all of our taxes have gone up. And this is going to further hurt those of us who are in the middle and low income, this override. Our property taxes have already gone up, so this is going to be a one-two punch. Thank you.
Further discussion on the main motion. Yep, in the back. Mr. Cap?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Paul Cap, Precinct Three. A question that just came from what Mr. Neto said, the $17 million in stabilization funds, is that separate from the $15 million free cash? Has Mr. Johnson Staub—
I don't have the exact—I don't have the exact numbers with you, but the free cash are funds in excess of appropriation that we still have, and the stabilization funds are all voted on by you and transferred into, like, savings accounts.
All right. Well, I got the $15 million from page 39, from the budget message.
So stabilization is not free cash. Those are two different things.
Right. But it looks to me like there's $32 million sitting out there. And in that, if we could utilize those funds, I would be totally against another Proposition Two and a Half override.
Mr. Johnson Staub?
Could I have that slide presentation back up, please? So the—the figure, the stabilization fund amount is separate from the free cash amount. What this slide shows here is the total free cash plus stabilization and retained earnings. Falmouth's number is 34.7 million, and you may be surprised to see that that level of reserves on a percentage basis is actually below average for the Cape. The figures are right here. The towns of Provincetown, Bourne, Barnstable, Mashpee, Orleans, Yarmouth, Turo, Dennis, all have a higher level of reserves when you look at both free cash and stabilization fund and retained earnings. Retained earnings are for enterprise funds. Many towns have enterprise funds for their water and sewer. Falmouth does not, so that's included within our free cash or our stabilization. So it would be our position that our reserves are not excessive. This is a prudent level of reserves, and it would not be a sustainable way to fund the recurring cost of firefighters.
Okay. Further discussion on the main motion. Ms. Pedersen?
Just want to mention that when the auditors look at the finances of the town, one of the things that they look at when they decide what kind of credit rating we're given, that AAA-plus bond rating that we get, is based on the reserves that we have to cover those unknown expenses that crop up. Our ability to handle that is sort of our going forward. If we're in a position where we're suddenly going to have to raise money, that lowers our credit rating. So our AAA bond rating really depends on having sufficient reserves to back up the unknown things that will arise.
Mr. Mancini?
Mark Mancini, Precinct Eight. I bought my house 10 years ago in this town. The plot of land next to my house, that is the same size as my plot of land with nothing on it, just sold for the same price that I bought my house for. Our taxes aren't limited to two and a half. My tax bill went up substantially because the housing market is on fire right now, and so the assessors assess our value much higher. If we keep on this route, we're going to see the same thing that happened in '09 when the housing market crashed, which it's going to do because interest rates are going through the roof. So we can't just keep raising the tax liability on everybody and expect them to be able to afford it. And we always say affordable housing is an issue in this town, and you're making it less affordable. So, you know, if I rent here, my landlord's going to put that tax bill on me. So there's more than just the people who can easily afford to live here. There's plenty of people who can barely afford to live here.
Okay. Question will come—we got one more in the back?
Terry Madures, Precinct Six. I wish the gentleman who talked about the insurance could give us a little bit of a figure, because that would balance out the tax rate increase, wouldn't it?
That's a pretty complicated formula to get the insurance rate for each individual. Yeah, we don't have that.
Is it close? I'm not looking for the exact figure. Is it close? Is it a legitimate consideration? Because it is true, if you live in an unsafe area, your insurance is going to go up. Look at flooding, for instance.
Mr. Rafferty?
Sometimes I'm embarrassed by speaking, but my point was there's an organization called the Insurance Service Organization, and they set the insurance rates that you get charged for your homeowner's insurance. It's based upon a lot of factors. I'm not an expert in this, but I have worked a lot in the water side of things, and I know that fire flows, fire volumes, and everything else all factor into that. I also know that one of the other factors in their equation is either adequate fire protection, either adequate number of fire staff in place. All I said was, in the presentation that was made, I don't know if anybody went back to the ISO and said, "If we don't put 14 more firefighters in, if we don't provide the necessary coverage for fighting fires or sustaining things, what will that do to your insurance rates?" My suspicion is, like bond ratings and other things, it would go up, not down, if you don't have adequate fire protection. So I'm sorry I don't have a precise figure, but I do know in other places where we've gotten the ISO ratings to come up in about five or six years ago, they—we got them to be improved in Falmouth because we put the new water plant online, we took care of some storage issues and whatnot, and whatnot. And so I just offer that as—it's not just you have to pay more on your taxes, you likely get something back on the insurance rate. Is it the full amount or not? I can't tell you, but there's something there.
Okay. The question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a majority, and we'll stay in recess for 15 minutes.
Falmouth Community Television's coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work, for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs.
Main Street Gallery and Real Estate. A family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth, focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson, L.L.P., have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
A&amp;A Paving. We believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service.
We believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance. Offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601 and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase. A local family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Dogs and Hogs, 781 Main Street. Ample parking in the back by our fence.
Lisa Peterson Asendorf, William Rabus Real Estate Mortgage Insurance.
Grassi Septic Solutions.
Turning Point Dance Studio.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road.
The Annie Hart Cool Team. Sotheby's International Realty.
Dalpe Excavation Incorporated. Info@dalpeexcavation.com.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop.
Every lighthouse needs a keeper. FriendsofNopsga.org.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass. Info@peopleforcats.org.
Martha's Vineyard Bank, 84 Main Street and 397 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth. 2 Water Street, Woods Hole.
The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org. 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology. Voice and data solutions. 781-930-5000.
Wacoit Congregational Church.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery.
M. Daphne Builders.
Danny's Barber Shop.
David Rogers Electric. 508-274-2057.
Murray and McDonald Insurance. 1-800-800-8990.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations.
Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth.
Mahoney's Garden Center.
The Cape Cod Five.
Ed Steve's Pizzeria and More.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers. Windfall. Shaw's Supermarket. Stop &amp; Shop.
All town meeting members present, please press 1A for the establishment of a quorum. When we reconvene, we'll be on Article 15. Okay, all town meeting members present, please press 1A. And we will reconvene on Article 15.
You're in the right place. Why is this not lit up? Why is this not lit up? Oh, they're not going to make control.
By a counted vote of 198, we have a quorum and the annual town meeting is back in session. Article 15, this is to vote in favor of allowing offshore wind developers the right of entry to conduct soil investigations and studies. The recommendation of the select board is indefinite postponement. Do we have a positive motion? As printed? The main motion as printed. Ms. Carey?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Oh, Rosemary Carey, Precinct 5. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Chair Taylor, members of the select board and town meeting members for hearing our comments tonight about Article 15. We have the privilege to speak for our fellow petitioners, longtime Falmouth residents from multiple precincts, where parents, grandparents, scientists, business professionals, who were disappointed by the recent decision by the select board to deny access to a wind developer to conduct soil testing for a potential offshore wind cable landing. We thought the decision was premature because it effectively shuts down exploration of the potential benefits to our community, to the Commonwealth and to the planet. So we submitted this article for town meeting's consideration, debate and hopefully your yes vote.
I'm Matt Patrick, Precinct 7. Article 15 is very straightforward. It is not an approval of an offshore wind project to make landfall in Falmouth. It merely asks town meeting to recommend to the select board that they allow soil testing on town-owned property. The testing is necessary, is a necessary step for developers to explore whether bringing cables ashore at a landing site is feasible. The article is advisory. The select board will still make the decision to grant access or not. So what's involved in soil testing? I want to find out if I can get hired to dig the hole if it ever gets done. That's, that's my hole in my garden, but that's about the size of what it would look like. Each pit will be dug by hand, about 18 by 18 inches and 2 to 4 feet deep. The work would be completed in about two weeks. Any grass or ground cover removed would be restored to their current Any grass or ground cover removed would be restored to their current state or better. During the digging, the roadways will remain open, so there is no impact on traffic or real estate values.
Proceeding with soil testing is a small but important step for Falmouth. It allows us to explore the potential community benefits to the town, which can be very significant. Recently, our neighbors in Barnstable entered into an agreement with Vineyard Wind allowing landfall at one of their beaches. The agreement guarantees at least $16 million in community fees plus applicable commercial taxes levied by the town. The agreement has already helped Barnstable address its sewer-ing challenges. Just for point of reference, a comparable host agreement in Falmouth would cover the costs of our beach department and recreation department combined. Another project in East Hampton, Long Island, reached a host agreement with South Fork Wind for $28.9 million over 25 years. That project is expected to come online next year, and it will help the town with its coastal resiliency challenges. And it's also important to note that with these economic and community benefits come more jobs, more economic activity, and the associated tax revenues. And in addition to the steady stream of revenue, a host agreement provides our town the opportunity to do a review of the specifications of the project and get assurances for the protection of groundwater and the environment. If the project were to go through, the effect would be cleaner air and less diseases like asthma and COPD, and of course, less carbon pollution that is warming our planet.
Massachusetts law requires the rapid development of offshore wind. In fact, offshore wind will be the largest contributor to the Commonwealth's ambitious greenhouse gas emissions targets, which are reducing emissions by 50% by 2030 and achieving net zero emissions by 2050. These are not arbitrary goals. It is the law of the Commonwealth, and the clock is ticking. A yes vote from town meeting tonight will advise the select board to allow for the collection of data for a project, for that project could be integral to the Commonwealth's time-critical and legally mandated climate mitigation plan. Denying access makes energy more expensive. We have a message from George Woodwell, the preeminent climate scientist in the world, not just Falmouth. He says, and he supports this article, "This week's level of, this week, levels of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere reached 423 parts per million, higher than they have been in more than three million years, long before humans walked the earth. The only way to save life as we know it is to cool the earth to pre-industrial temperatures. The only way to do that is to stop burning fossil fuels, replacing them with renewable energy." Am I doing?
Yes. This one, right?
I don't know. Okay. "Two weeks ago, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate, I guess, on climate change, IPCC, advised governments and policymakers everywhere," that's us, "that the world is on the brink of climate catastrophe. The window to act is rapidly closing and requires deep, rapid, and immediate efforts across all aspects of society." That's a quote. What does this have to do with soil testing? Everything. Falmouth is on the front lines of climate change, already besieged by beach erosion, coastal flooding, longer heat waves, vector borne diseases like Lyme, destructive storms, and more. If our town can provide a safe and suitable landing site for offshore wind transmission, we have an obligation to consider all the facts, and that's, that starts with soil testing."
Town meeting has a long history of supporting renewable energy development and fighting climate change, and this article is consistent with that record. In 2015, we approved a landfill solar array. 2019, approved the stretch building code, which allowed Falmouth to become a green community. In 2020, declared a climate emergency and voted for a plastic water bottle ban. In 2021, voted for a large commercial solar farm. And in 2022, approved the hiring of a sustainability director, now coordinator, passed tonight. Article 15 is also consider, can, consistent with our local comprehensive plan, which states Falmouth's town government will provide leadership and set the example in carbon footprint reduction, and that towns and, that the town and residents will use the best available cost-effective technologies to minimize dependence on carbon-based fuels. So the reasons to vote yes on Article 15 are clear. We're asked, the article asks for town meeting to recommend that soil testing proceed only. It's not, it's not the entire project we're addressing tonight. The article is advisory. There are significant potential benefits to the town if the project proceeds. It's consistent with common, with the Commonwealth's climate law and with town meeting's values and vision. It's also a decision for future generations. Someday, we will be held to account by our children and grandchildren when they ask, "What did we do when something could be done?" Do we want to be the town that refuses to explore the potential of an, the potential of an offshore wind project when we will be severely impacted by sea level rise, coastal erosion, and other climate impacts? We hope, we petitioners hope not. Our town has an obligation to make decisions based on science while representing the interests of the whole town. A yes vote on Article 15 advises the select board to do just that. Please vote for Article, yes for Article 15 tonight.
Okay, Mr. Latimer. Microphone down here for Mr. Latimer, and then Mr. Scherer.
Oh, okay. Rich Latimer, Precinct 1. I'm speaking in favor of this article, although it is just be advisory. I want to say that this is an issue that has gotten me quite upset with our selectmen. I, I drive, I live on Walker Street, but I drive along Surf Drive every morning to get to my downtown office. Why? Because it's a beautiful drive, it's a beautiful view. However, I've noticed over the past few years, after every significant storm, that road is flooded. And I think if you ask any coastal engineers, they're going to tell you that road is doomed unless we get on the jet ball and get, do something done about sea level rise. That is a very real thing. Now, I, I look at what this whole issue coming up before town meeting, having to come up before town meeting, as an embarrassment for the town. This town is the site of several world-class oceanographic and sea science, ocean science institutions. The people like Dr. Woodwell, who are in those institutions, are all in favor of this project, of bringing those cables here. We are told by the opponents who, for the plan to originally go up Worcester Court, well, it's not NIMBY. Oh, no, of course not. It's just put it in somebody else's yard. That's what they're saying. The problem is, these same people are disrespecting wind power, saying it's so expensive that it requires a subsidy. Well, at present, yes, that's true. But you can be sure that this company that wants to bring those cables into Falmouth aren't doing it just to deprive these people of their property values. They're doing it because that's the most cost-effective site that they can find. They wouldn't be doing it if it was cheaper or even as, as expensive, no more expensive, to bring them to where? New Bedford, Fall River? They would, the issue there is, it's very, very costly to bury lines under the sea, much less costly than under land. It's hugely costly. So what these people are opposing is wind power per se, no matter what. They come up with all these reasons, the whales, the birds. What they're really talking about is their convenience and their property values. It's NIMBY. And I think the selectmen do a disservice to the town as a whole by upholding their objections. Now, what with this project here that we're talking about tonight is, the company has seen the opposition to going up Worcester Court. So they have proposed, well, okay, let's look at Kite Park. There aren't as many houses around it, so why not? That's the question we have to ask the selectmen. Why not? If they don't want the cables to go up Worcester Court, let, let them look at another site. That's all that we're here tonight. But I want to tell you that they're, we're going to have to allow that to go someplace. And I'm also going to say, we've seen on the presentation that bringing these wind cables ashore is a matter of state policy. And I'm going to tell you, when push comes to shove, finally, if this company doesn't get it, they can go to the state and make Worcester Court into another Curly Boulevard. Those of us who have been around long enough know what that means. And I'll just tell you what that meant. The developer of the Seacrest, the developer of the Seacrest Hotel, which has been a very important and, you know, significant part of the town's economy, wanted the town fathers back in the 1930s.
Mr. Latimer?
Okay.
Your four minutes is up, but I love this story, so. Let's give him, let's, let's give him like 45 more seconds to finish the story. All in favor say aye, opposed no, the ayes have it. Mr. Latimer.
Went to the town fathers and said, the predecessors of this board, "Well, let, build me a road out to this new facility." They said no. So then he said, "Well, let me build the road out to this new facility." They said no. So they went to the state, Governor Curley, and said, "State, build me this road." So the state came down, took the road. That's why that Curly Boulevard is a state highway, by the way. And then the state gave it back to the town. And all the town fathers could do was to name it, so they named it Curly Boulevard. True story. Well, there's nothing to, there's nothing to stop the state from doing the same thing with this far more important project than somebody's hotel. Thank you.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification.
Do you want me to come back, or do you want to?
Just a point of clarification.
Okay.
Uh, that is a true story. My good friend, Mr. Latimer, said. What's not right, though, is that wind power is more expensive than anything else. It's actually competes with natural gas and coal. It's very inexpensive form of electric generation.
Mr. Scherer.
Dan Scherer, Precinct 6, and at my age, I like to hold on to something. Not many of you people were here at the first meeting when we met with the wind organization. We asked them, I was here, I live in West Falmouth, nowhere near where this is going in. They brought down, I think, and it was, what, in September? No, it was the middle of summer. A long time for me to remember how, what, how many, but there were six or seven were people. And they could answer about three of, three out of 50 questions. They did not know what's going to happen. They not doing anything else. And we asked them if they would come back. They took, and I don't have notes, I don't remember the date, if I was home, I could look at my calendar. They did come back, and we had another meeting, which I was at, and they still could not answer the questions. Oh, I went too fast. They were told, the first committee, they were told they would be back to us in a couple of weeks, not months, not half a year, but a couple of weeks with answers. That never happened. They came back later, they came to, or the selectmen, they still didn't have answers. We asked them to, that, we couldn't, we asked the selectmen not to okay it until they answered the questions. I understand they came back a few weeks ago, and they invited a few people. I was not there, I was at the other two meetings. And you people are blaming the selectmen for this. They didn't say, "No, they couldn't do it." They said, "We won't allow you to do it until you tell us what you are going to do." And that's all the selectmen wanted. And everybody's saying, they said, "No." They said, "No." They didn't. They said, "Tell us what your plans are." And I'd like to thank the selectmen for sticking up for the town, as they did, because we shouldn't let anybody in here unless we know what they want to do and when. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Hargraves? You got two hands, or are you trying to get both of you? Okay, because I had one of the two of you on the list. Okay. Mr. Hargraves, go ahead.
Peter Hargraves, Precinct 9. So Dan didn't steal all my thunder, but I would like a more specific clarification on this. And, and, and I really don't appreciate that if someone is opposing this article, they're being mischaracterized as against wind power and clean energy. That's just not true. But they're against not knowing how this is going to be done here and what impact it will have on our town. And so my question, more specifically through you, Mr. Moderator, to anyone on the select board who would care to answer, is related to their position on allowing sampling to occur in the future. Because I heard very clearly the explanation when they, when the select board deliberated on this article, and the explanation or rationale was that South Coast hasn't, hadn't been especially responsive, and that they just felt that this was an appropriate way to chastise them. Well, I want to know, I would like to know, please, respectfully, if this means that nobody will be allowed, including South Coast or any other applicants, to come in and sample on behalf of making a decision for laying cable through Falmouth? Or is this just sending a message that we expect a good-faith negotiation about this issue? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Hargraves. I think if you look back and take a look at how the board voted initially, we voted for the testing from the same company. Didn't happen, they came back to us, as Mr. Scherer said. happen, they came back to us. As Mr. Shearer said, we held a public forum. We simply want them to partner with us. And I believe that's what the board is asking for.
Mr. Brown?
I'd like to caution Town Meeting against sending this message that you want to send to us, because I think it really sets a stage for what Mr. Latimer was alluding to, where the Energy Facility Siting Board would overrule all our zoning and implement this, whether we like it or not. I think the fact that we declared a climate emergency, what was it, last year or the year before, I think the combination of the declaration of a climate emergency, and then this advisory vote to tell us that, you know, we should be allowing the wind turbine people to come into town regardless of what we think, sets the stage for the people on the Energy Facility Siting Board to say, "Well, you know, maybe we will overrule them, because the Town Meeting says they like it and they want it, and the Select Board maybe is not being reasonable." I think we are being reasonable. We only wanted to have the same courtesy afforded to us. They came here in June after having all these meetings that were very one-way. If you attended any of their meetings previously, you would see, it was just informational, bunch of, you know, feel-good-about-wind stuff, and no answers to any questions, no real opportunity to ask meaningful questions. We finally had a meeting in person, got to ask them some questions, and then we never heard from them again, until it was time to ask for another permission to go on-town land. And we said, "No, you're not working with us. When you get it together, come back and talk to us." And we haven't seen them yet.
Okay, and the balcony?
Maura Powers, Precinct 6. I had a letter in The Enterprise, like, not this past issue, but the previous week. And I live across the street from where South Coast Wind proposes to put a substation. And it's six acres of substation. That is massive. And that is way too big, way, way too big. A project for our town and having it placed so close to where people live. They've already admitted that there's going to be low humming, there's also going to be ambient light, and there's also the threat to our water supply because of any kinds of accidents that may happen with dielectric fluids. And Mr. Latimer spoke about the whole NIMBY thing and property values. Well, when you live near something and you own property, you don't want it to devalue. And what about our quality of life? Having to hear humming at night, ambient light at night? I have quiet nights that are dark. And it's not fair to put some people in town in that position, just so that, you know, we can be green. I mean, I'm all for Windpower, I'm all for it, just like everybody else, but it has to be done smart. And this is not smart. It's not well-vetted, not well-planned. We don't know how big and how much is going to be happening with the substation, what's going to be attached to it. Well, they have to do improvements to it. And also, the last thing I want to say is, didn't we learn anything with the wind turbines? And the people that lived near those and had to put up with noise and all that? We can't do that again. So that's why we need, yes, we need to do better with our energy, but we have to do it smart. We have to think it through, we have to make sure that in the long run, it is going to benefit everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Potamus?
Jerry Potamus, Precinct 2. I got a couple of things that haven't been brought up in the newspaper. Our government and public health agencies right now say AC and DC magnetic waves are not at risk. But just remember how long it took them to regulate asbestos, cigarette smoking, emissions from coal-fired power plants, lead and copper in our drinking water, pending regulations in PFAS and PFOS, disposal of certain hazardous waste. Yes, government says most cost-effective based on science we know now. And that's science we know now, not science that we don't know. So that is one of the reasons. It may not be a big reason, but it was brought out before the state of Massachusetts approved the wastewater site for the main wastewater treatment plant. State agency had all the regulations and information it needed at the time. Most people would say that was probably a mistake. The letter I got from one of the proponents, I mentioned about Canal Electric, they seemed to have done a cursory look at going to Canal Electric, because it couldn't maintain the excess power needed at certain times. Well, we don't know if they did any other further investigation as to what it would cost to go to Canal Electric, and the fact that it may, the word "cost-effective" is governmentese. It blends a lot of things in. And yeah, is it making profits better? You want to minimize losses. But they haven't adequately explained why they don't want to go to Canal Electric. Another more local reason is, they want to use Kite Park as a potential site. Well, that just came out, and I hope we'll get to it later, that might be the site of a future wastewater outfall. So are we going to give up this potential site for a future wastewater outfall? And that was approved by the Water Quality Management Committee. And I think a number of the people on that committee, all Philly smart, all seem to indicate that Kite Park is viable. Hate to use the words, it's not just a pipe dream. So I think we have to vote this down, because we don't know. And although the thought is laudable, we don't need this at the sites they're proposing at this time. It does not mean we can't revisit it at a better site or later. If the state chooses to overrule us, so be it. But we should go down saying what we want for Falmouth. None of the issues we heard today are going to solve anything in Falmouth. Those are global issues that we're supposed to act locally on. I think we should act locally on local issues, like a potential wastewater outfall site. Thank you.
Yep, move back to the right. The gentleman standing can sit down, you're way down on the list. I know you've been standing there, but this list is long. Yep, you're on the list. Yep. Ms. Fenwick, I'll add you to the list.
So, okay, got it. This works. So, I definitely would consider myself for more-
Can we have a name and precinct, please?
Oh, sorry. Madison Valley, Precinct 7.
Thank you.
I consider myself more for renewable energies. But my main concern with it being offshore is the level of noise pollution, though come both from building wind turbines, as well as when they are actually being used. So, do we know anything that might mitigate the noise pollution as well? Or is that something we don't know much about yet?
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of, if you want to, if you want to address it.
I would just say that this article does not endorse any one developer, but we do have assurances from the developer who applied in Falmouth that noise mitigation would be, obviously, part of their presentation, not obviously, but part of their plan. So, for example, there was some misinformation about noise at 70 decibel levels as coming from the substation, but we received information from the developer that applied that they would comply with not only the state's decibel level of 10 decibels, but also the town of Falmouth of 6, which is, you know, very compatible with human health and so on.
Okay. The next speaker is right beside Madison. Yep.
Tara Valley, Precinct 7. I again vote you, ask you to vote this down. Again, reiterating what the woman said up in the balcony, did we not learn anything from the wind turbines that were causing health problems to humans on land? Well, what's it going to do to our ocean animals? You're not going to have to worry about erosion, you're going to have to worry about no fish in the sea, no marine life anymore because of noise pollution. Again, I do what I can to keep things green. I recycle, I have solar panels. And one of my other things, questions is, how many people live near where the lines are going to be? Is there anybody here that's for this that lives near that? Or is it just everybody against it?
Okay. Gentleman in the balcony?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Bosnowski, President of Falmouth Heights Mary Vista Neighborhood Association. I've been called a lot of names over the last few months, and NIMBY is one of the weakest. From the presentation that the petitioners just made, I would have to say, I did not hear a lot of benefits to the town, other than the host agreement. A lot of the other ones' jobs, for example, is dubious at best. They're going to be temporary jobs, they're not going to be long-term jobs. There's no question about it. I rise in opposition to Article 15. This article serves little or no purpose, in my opinion. What's the point of the town granting testing access to any project or any location that might not be approved? This article seems to be more of a spiteful article constructed and signed by seven members of an advisory committee and appointed by the Select Board. While this article makes no specific reference to South Coast or Mayflower Wind, let's be clear. The reason for this article, as stated by the petitioners, quote, "is to reverse the Select Board's decision not to allow further testing for an offshore wind project," not specific, of course. This article is not about soil testing, in my mind. I assume virtually everywhere they test in Falmouth is probably going to be suitable, other than a couple of the rocky shores. Granted, any testing would be temporary and relatively minor. However, it's the consequential negative impact of the project of this magnitude that will have on our community, which will be significant and permanent. This is about the town having the right to say where or if such a cable or project should be considered for Falmouth. It's not up to the developer. And this, to a great extent, is why we're here today. The developer was granted testing rights in 2020, quote-unquote, "without commitment" on the town's behalf. The developer then filed plans, detailed plans, and an application with the state prior to achieving any agreement with the town. And now, that's even on temporary hold, suspension is the word. In the meantime, the developer has also filed plans and applications with the federal government for the project, and again, without yet obtaining any town approval. So the testing and lack thereof, perhaps, has still led to these applications going forward. This project's in the works. All the while, in the meantime, the developer was coming to town and doling out money to local organizations, or sponsoring town events, or hanging their promotional flags all around downtown. This is not how a good potential partner should act. I've recently written to the editor and copied some of you, that the new game in town, instead of the old rock-paper-scissors, is now climate, environment, community. And in the case of many, the climate trumps everything. There must be a balance here. The impact on the environment, the impact on the community and the people therein have to be considered. Lately, lastly, did you know that the Federal Bureau of Ocean Management had suggested that Minot Beach was a cable-landing site? Did anybody know that? And the cables were going to go directly up Davisville Road? Anybody know that? I don't think so, unless you read the 1,800-page BOEM documentation. That was turned down by the town, to be perfectly honest with you. And why? Aside from the complications once they got up to Route 28, but also because Boem contacted Falmouth, the town, and the town said, "It's too much of a residential community."
Okay, the gentleman's time has expired.
Mr. Moderator- Two more sentences, if I may, just to finish up?
A lot of this is beyond the scope of this article, by a long shot.
Okay.
There are a lot of locations that could handle this project, and the benefits that, to the greater good that the petitioners mentioned, would also be served by going to the Canal's power plant or elsewhere. I say, "Vote no" on Article 15.
Mr. Goldstone?
So, Jed Goldstone, Precinct 2. I'm a scientist, and data, it's just data. It's just asking for data. And with due respect to Mr. Brown, the Select Board does need to actually listen to the voice of times, of Town Meeting. We've heard one issue that the Select Board has not been listening currently. We've, I apologize. We've had one issue recently that the Select Board is not listening to Town Meeting, as we are representatives of the town. And this is just advisory to get more data. This is not a decision on wind turbine sighting, wind landing, power, anything. It's just a little bit of data. And it's just telling the Select Board to listen to us.
Okay, the gentleman that was standing in the aisle, with the hat there.
Richard Dubey, Precinct 6. This is Article 15, and I don't see anything in Article 15 that has anything to do with substations. I don't see anything in the article that has to do with where the cable will come ashore. What Article 15 is concerned with is where certain test holes will be dug. Following the scientific method, this would be right after hypotheses, you'd start experimentation. I'm rising in support of 15, because before you can go any further, before you can deny anything any further, you have to begin here. Before we can accept anything further, we have to begin here. All that this is, is a gathering of scientific data. It's no more. You read the article. There's nothing in this article about substations. There's nothing in this article about where cables are going to come ashore. Nothing. All that it has to do is digging small holes for testing purposes. No more. We're not authorizing anything else. So I would support Article 15, and at least get the data gathered, so that we can make better judgments later on.
Ms. Fenwick?
Thank you. Judy Fenwick, Precinct 1. I missed last November's Town Meeting because I was in Egypt at the UN Climate Conference. As part of my work at Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, I am the designated contact point for HUI with the UN Climate Change Secretariat. So, that relationship, saying that the institutions are in favor of this, I don't think that point can be made. I know that the presentation covered more than just digging a few holes. You talked about the benefits of the project, the reasons for the project, you're talking about the entire project at that time, the financial benefits, you're talking about Town Meeting values and vision. So what I would ask you to consider is- So what I would ask you to consider is, we are saying, I, I'm going to vote no on this, because this is a snout under the tent by the small company, the developer, who has some answering to do to the parent companies. They have got their purchase, I'm not sure I got that, what have, the purchase agreement?
Our, our purchase agreement.
Okay. So, that agreement for Commonwealth Wind, which also answers to the same parent companies, is on hold, and South Coast may be verging on being on hold. So that, by offering to allow them to come in and do testing, is a snout under the tent to prove to the parent companies that they're actually engaged with the town. So, I would just say that cables coming onshore are the least of my worries. This is a project, the entire project is way oversized for this community, and it's the substation that scares more than the cables coming onshore. And so, if we're gonna take this into account, digging a few holes also could lead to digging bigger holes to accommodate a six-acre substation on a 26-acre plot of land.
Okay, Ms. Keith?
Melissa Keith, Precinct Four. Through the moderator, I have a couple of questions for the petitioners. As a history, before I was a nurse, I was an environmental chemist, certainly not to the level of Dr. Goldstone, however, I did do my fair share of groundwater and surface sampling. Is there anyone here from South Coast Wind to represent your article that can defend any of this? Maybe quiet some of the concerns, or clarify, are we gonna have a six-acre, um, substation? Or is there anyone that can clarify any of this?
As I said earlier, we're not endorsing any one developer, and I don't know if someone from South Coast Wind is here tonight. I would just say that, uh, we're glad so many people are for wind energy. But I would just say, other communities figure it out. Barnstable, East Hampton, Long Island, and so on, they build substations and deliver the cables safely, trust the engineering plan that the water won't be polluted, mitigate sound. Other communities are doing this. They've been doing it in Europe for decades, and we can figure it out, too, and we need to.
So I should be clear, I 100% support alternative energy. I do not support this article in any way. I, I fear trusting the process, which we don't seem to have a clear, excuse me, we don't seem to have a clear process as to what exactly is gonna happen. I, I trust that you think it's gonna be a couple of 18-square-inch holes. I 100% believe you, Mr. Patrick, when I asked you last week at our precinct meeting. However, I also professionally can say that I know how quickly that this scope creeps, and I'm completely with Ms. Fenwick on the snout under the tent. Thanks.
Ms. Shepherd? Ms. Harris, you're on the list.
Susan Shepherd, Precinct One. I just want to make two points here. The article is about sampling, which I'm certainly in favor of. The other thing is, folks, I look around this room, I know many of you, a, a lot of you are in my age bracket, or above, or slightly below. What are we leaving our children? This is a much bigger issue than the town of Falmouth. We have children, we have grandchildren. I worry about my grandchildren now. I, I'm gonna be dead before the full effects of climate change are on us. Hopefully, they won't be. Falmouth is going to be underwater in the future. We have to deal with this. And one of the ways we have to deal with it is, uh, energy like wind and solar. I, I don't think we should just slam the door shut. Thank you.
Mr. Duff?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Stone, Precinct Six, Town Meeting Member and Financial Officer of the Community Preservation Committee. I rise in support of Article 15. I grew up in Falmouth and have lived here my entire life. I'm a property owner, business owner, and father. I'm also one of the younger members of Town Meeting. I have, I have many things to be fortunate of, and, and we all do, as Falmouth residents. Unfortunately, my generation and my daughter's generation will be the ones who will have to face the existential challenges to our coastal community that climate change poses. The rising sea levels, the environmental degradation of our inland and coastal waters, the intensifying storms, the loss of livelihoods and property, the rising food costs and insurance costs. Our business-as-usual fossil-fuel-based economy is pushing our planet, upon which we all rely, to the brink. We need offshore wind projects. As a coastal community, helping the transition to clean energy is one of the most important things we should and can be doing. This is existential to our way of life, that we've all enjoyed here. The temporary construction time of a project, like the project has been discussed, is worth the significant, long-term community benefits. What will we tell our children if we do not take action on climate change? What do we tell our children if we block the very solutions that can help address climate change? Let's provide future Falmouth generations a chance, a chance, at the same way of life we've been able to enjoy. Please support Article 15. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Harris?
Charlotte Harris, Precinct Five. I actually live right off Curly Boulevard. And the way I heard that story was, Curly gambled out there and he wanted a better road, but that's just what we heard.
The state was supposed to legalize gambling, and the developer wanted to build a casino where the sequester is, but the state never legalized gambling. That was the bet.
He wasn't governor long enough. So, I rise in opposition to this. I hope that you all will vote against it, and I have two reasons for that. One, I really think the town meeting ought to consider supporting their Select Board. We elected these people, these people have the right to make the decision on it, they are the ones negotiating with the people who are proposing this, and we are weakening their position for us. And I don't think that's sensible of us to do. The other reason is, I think that this is actually a bad idea. Judy's right, this is the nose under the tent. And so it's disingenuous to say that we shouldn't look ahead to what will follow on this. Okay, you dig a test hole, and then what will happen? Oh, but you let us dig the test hole, now we just wanna put some wires, and one by one, bit by bit, without ever giving us the whole picture to consider. So this is our chance to say to the Select Board, maybe your support for their coming, just you wanna negotiate it, is incorrect. Maybe the townspeople here want to let you know they're not really in favor of finding a landing in Falmouth. They think that helping Shell Oil, AKA South Coast, find the cheaper way to go to the mainland might not be in our best interest.
Okay. In the balcony? Is someone in the balcony there?
Yes. I'm from Precinct Two, Carol Zaman. I'm, I'm imploring that the town meeting members support our selectmen and their recent four-to-one vote, and decline to support Article 15, for some of the same reasons we've heard tonight. I hope, I hope this is coming in clearly. Falmouth Heights is a densely populated residential town. It's comprised of numerous narrow and several one-way streets. It's inappropriate, it's dangerous to even consider it for industrial, commercial project of the magnitude that South Coast Wind is proposing. The area where they seek access lacks the appropriate space for industrial-sized trucks and construction equipment. The parking lots are small and barely adequate for the few residents from Falmouth and tourists that fight for parking places there each summer. It, it is out of selfish greed that this non-American corporation, one that already changed its name once, eyes our shoreline, showing no respect for the residents and the traditions of our, our communities. South Coast Wind has no skin in this game. If they lose, if, if there are losers, it will only be the dedicated residents of Falmouth and our Select Board that fights along with us to save our wonderful shoreline community. Windmills are, after all, a lot like electric cars, and thank you for your honesty tonight about why the policemen perhaps would prefer not to have them at this time, because they're not really very reliable. And I hate to bring it up, it's been brought up twice, but I applaud the earlier speakers, much like Windmill One and Two. Those were a little costly, weren't they? And what about the 200 people who lost their lives in Texas about a year ago when they had a cold snap? Those windmills, that preferred brand of energy to keep them warm when the temperatures dropped, they just didn't work. I wonder about the ones in saltwater working any better in the Northeast?
Okay, let's keep it on this one.
Okay. What guarantees that South Coast windmills will work and operate as expected? If not, our shoreline will be ruined, our shoreline losses will be for naught. Not that they would care, because we know about the failure of large corporations. Usually, they are followed with bankruptcy. I think we can all remember, remember Cylindra, that we have financially suffered from as taxpayers of Massachusetts. Please respect our board, please support their four-to-one decision, deny soil testing, prevent Pandora's box from being opened. As well, we can see the gifts that often these big corporations bring, are bribes, and are usually disguised. I hope that some of the people who are supporting this are not supporting it because gifts were brought to them, too. Okay? And I don't mean in this room, trust me, that is not my intent. But we do know that some large organizations have been given grant money. I don't think our Select Board has. So please, 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 not, not a board that has the courage to care about its residents and its shoreline. And I thank you for listening, and I hope the best decision is made for the people of Falmouth.
Mr. Patterson?
The facts right now are that renewable energy sources are actually less expensive than the fossil-fuel sources, and so there's an economic reason. Now, when the rate, the, you know, ever-source go, or other power providers go before the regulatory agencies, they roll out all their costs. And it just so happens that the further you are from the source, the more line loss there is, and therefore, they go before the regulatory agencies and say, "We should be able to charge more for our electrical energy distribution." And they do. It turns out that Falmouth pays a higher rate than most of the Midwestern, Mid-Atlantic, and Northeastern communities that are closer to the sources. I don't know of any active sources right now on Massachusetts. There is a backup source up on the old canal plant, in case there's a, an outage. ISO New England is a, is the organization, it's a not-for-profit organization that's actually responsible for making sure that we have adequate sources to always need, meet the needs that we have. And I attended one of the briefings that they gave to the Massachusetts Municipal Association as a newly-elected Select Board member, and listened to how ISO New England manages the grid, so that we always have the electric power we need. But if you're further from the source of electricity, you will pay more. It's just the way the cookie crumbles, I guess you'd say. If we had a source like the offshore wind farm south of Martha's Vineyard that was being proposed, it would save us money, and it would save all of us money. Somebody was asking, "What is it gonna benefit all of us?" It's gonna, no matter what community that power lands in, every one of us will save money. And somehow or other, down the road, we're gonna have to address the fact that fossil-fuel energy is limited, it's a finite resource. And as it gets lower and lower in quantity, you know, supply and demand, it's gonna cost more. So, I know there, there's health issues in one of my multiple careers. I actually, for three years, worked for the Department of Defense Electromagnetic Compatibility Analysis Center. And we were looking at the health physics associated with, uh, energy across the entire spectrum, from direct current all the way up to cosmic rays, light being somewhere in the middle or in the middle region. And the only time that we ever saw any time when the electrical energy actually coupled into chromosome-type micro scales was when it was in certain frequencies. You've got microwave frequencies, you've got ultraviolet, which is, of course, what causes sunburning and skin cancer. You've got cosmic radiation, you've got things that come from active radioactive sources, but light is not a band that causes cancer in humans, and neither is direct current, from all the studies that I reviewed in my, so the health issues, I, I'm sorry, they're gonna bring direct current ashore and transmit it to some distribution center, where it will be turned into 60 Hz, the same frequency that comes through our electric ranges that we stand right on top of, experiencing those fields, but I don't think that there's any evidence that 60 Hz alternating current is causing any kind of cancer in human beings. And, you know, I was in the field for some time. So, I'm just saying, the issues of health, I don't believe are factual issues that we need to be worried about. We've lived in direct, excuse me, 60 Hz environments, we've had power lines, we go underneath of them all the time. So the health issues, to me, are not valid. That's my perspective on it. I think we have to take a look at the community disruption, that's a valid concern, but I think we need to remain open to actually sourcing energy.
Mr. Patterson, your time has expired.
Okay. Well, relatively close to the Falmouth, or the costs are gonna continue to escalate.
Mr. Noonan?
John Noonan, Precinct Seven. We're talking about holes being dug. My concern is, as a number of people in the room, the holes being dug is just the first step. It's like when you go to look at a piece of land to build a house, you wanna find out where to put the septic system, so you dig a hole. Maybe you find out that the hole, it's not a good place to put the septic system, so you have to reroute it, and do a different route. It's just the first step. And by giving them the first step, we're saying, "Okay, maybe you can take the second step." But we don't know, because we don't know what the final outcome is. Many of you probably know, well, maybe you don't, Alzheimer's runs rampant in my family. I've been dealing with Alzheimer's research doctors for over 20 years. And what I know from them, from a number of the doctors that I've spoken to in the past couple of weeks, Alzheimer's, they believe is contributed by the high-tension lines that run through the substations. Until we know that for sure, we shouldn't be letting them dig a hole to possibly do more with their lines underground. There is a lot of answers that we have to get, and we need the whole picture before we say yes to digging a hole. So please, say no to this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Duffne? Mr. Duffne?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Duffne, Precinct Six. I have a couple of questions. First of all, I just wanna say that I came prepared tonight to vote in, in favor of this for all the, for what I thought were all the right reasons. But to that point, I wanna- But to that point, I want to ask one of the selectmen, maybe Mr. Brown, can the town, can the selectmen make an airtight agreement that says that there will be no further anything until we have some of the serious questions that we have raised here tonight and a lot more that have not been even asked? Can we do that so that we could move forward to learn more? Because this is not, this is not a Falmouth problem, this is not just a Massachusetts problem, this is not just a New England problem, it's a big problem. And we do need to address it. But could you answer that, and then I have something I want to say.
Mr. Brown.
I don't know if I can really answer that. We can, you know, the agreement that we signed last time did clearly say that it was just for testing, just for, you know, excavating the holes so they could test to see what soil conditions were, and it didn't imply any further agreement. So that would be what we would do again if we were to agree to such a thing. But I got to say personally, my opinion of it was that the whole interaction between us and them just was, wasn't well done. When they first came to town, they asked us about a couple of sites, and we said, "Well, you know, all of our utilities going to the vineyard are down at the end of Mill Road. So we'd like you to be, you know, considering that. That's our first choice." And they said, "Oh, okay, but we need the heights as a backup, just in case that doesn't work out." And then they didn't say anything to us again, there was no more communication. We found out by their filing with the Energy Facility Siting Board that they fully intended to go to the heights in the first place. And I think they were just kind of saying okay to us on the surf drive just to placate us. So that's not how I want to do business with such a project this big, to find out everything third-hand, second-hand. If it's a project this size in this town, we need to have honest, deliberate dialogue. So I think that's been lacking.
I have done, if I may, Mr. Moderator, I've done some of my own personal research, if you will, in terms of looking at some of the infrastructure that comes out of Pilgrim, the retired Pilgrim nuclear plant. And if you see it, it's pretty daunting, how big that infrastructure is. That said, Pilgrim was only putting out less than 700 megawatts. They're talking about, I read that they're bringing to shore 2,200 megawatts. Canal Electric puts out 1,200 megawatts. If you look at the infrastructure that these facilities, you know, comprise, it's pretty daunting to think that this is double the size of Canal, almost four times the size of Pilgrim. And so, and again, these are the questions that we have, we're not being able to ask of them. And, you know, I want to say yes, but I'm scared to death about saying yes because of what I see. Eight miles of road's going to be dug up, you know, to get to the substation that they're going to build is going to be, you know, there's a lot of money that could bring that to Canal. Thank you.
Mr. Neto. Yep, I'll add you back.
Mr. Moderator, as soon as I was getting close to the witching hour, I said, "Make a motion that we vote to extend this discussion for this article only." So we can go...
Okay, we're going to take, we're going to take a vote to go after 11 just on this article, so that we can finish this.
Standard operating procedure.
All those in favor of just extending for this article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It's a pity the chairs that the ayes have it. And next is in the balcony.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Greg Masmanian, precinct two. It's a noble effort by the petitioners on Article 15, but it misses a very important set of facts. There are seven bidders for the federal waters to put in wind farms. By approving Article 15, you're giving all seven of them the right to come in and test in Falmouth. Many of us think it's a very benign item to have them test, but like other people have said this evening, you've got to look at the end game, and that's where our selectmen spent their time. They looked at the facts, they looked at the end game. By inviting them in to test is just as good as closing the door to our ability to negotiate. Very, very important. Now, the other thing that's been highlighted in their presentation today is the jobs. Have you ever walked down Main Street and seen a street, a window on any one of the businesses that doesn't say "Help Wanted"? We don't have an unemployment issue here, okay? The other thing is the economic benefits of a hosting agreement. The early hosting agreement called for about $1 million over 20 or 25 years. That's less than 1% of our budget. I'll tell you what, increase my taxes as opposed to putting 350,000 volts under our beach down Worcester Court, okay? God grant me grandchildren, but they'll never play on Worcester Court or Central Park. Keep in mind, manhole covers blow. And you might want to ask the fire chief if he has the apparatus to go down those halls or would he even send his men down there? Okay? It happens every day in major cities. And you want to put them on a park on Worcester Court, the kite park, through a residential area where the average square footage of house is less than 10,000 square feet? Come on, this makes no sense. So I am not in favor of Article 15, and I am in favor of what the selectmen have done. Thank you.
Jason Cullinan, precinct six, I call the question. Okay, we have a motion to move the question. This requires two-thirds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Pity the chairs that the ayes have it by the two-thirds. Sorry about that, I was trying to let you wrap up. Okay, the question will come on the main motion as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It's a pity the chairs that the noes have it by a majority. Are you good?
What was the question?
I doubt the vote.
Okay. Could we cue up a slide? We're going to, we're going to take a counted vote. All those in favor signify by pressing 1A. All those opposed signify by pressing 2B. This is the main motion as printed.
Yep, no, he's been on the list for a while.
By a counted vote of 72 in favor and 116 opposed, the ruling of the chair stands, and the meeting will stand in recess until 7 o'clock tomorrow.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Megane Communications. Megane offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors. Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction maintenance to site work for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, a family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth, focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The attorneys at Oppenheim and Nickerson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly-added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Dogs and Hogs, 781 Main Street, ample parking in the back by our fence.
Lisa Peterson, Aysendorf, William Ravis Real Estate Mortgage Insurance.
Grassi Septic Solutions.
Turning Point Dance Studio.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road.
The Annie Hart Cool Team, Sotheby's International Realty.
Dalpi Excavation Incorporated.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop.
Every lighthouse needs a keeper.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass.
Martha's Vineyard Bank, 84 Main Street and 397 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, 2 Water Street, Woods Hole.
The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org.
Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions.
Wacoit Congregational Church.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery.
M. Duffany Builders.
Danny's Barber Shop.
David Rogers Electric.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations.
Hanush Jewelers in downtown Falmouth.
Mahoney's Garden Center.
The Cape Cod Five.
Ed Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers. Windfall.